Right, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, the planning board and the members of town staff. Welcome to the October 20th, 2021, meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. The time is approximately 6:30. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'd like to do a roll call. Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan.
Tom Callahan here.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady here.
Paul Cleary.
Paul Cleary here.
Okay, Eric Potter.
Here.
I just saw you, Eric. You'll go back into the order. I'd like to start out by first giving a very brief description of what tonight's activities will include. The agenda summary is 6:30 PM. We will have deliberation on the site plan decision for subject property 20, 25, and 30 on Situate Hill Road. It needs a road or some designation at the end of that name. At 6:45, we are intending to continue the public hearing for site plan review that's filed by Mr. Amaland for a property on 808 Chief Justice Highway. And then at 7:30, we plan to reopen the public hearing to discuss the proposed articles for the Cohasset Special Town Meeting to be held December 13, 2021. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Let's just go on. You don't need approval.
It is a formal process that is often used. I'd like to get an approval of the agenda. Thank you. We have a number of protocol statements that we want to inform the public about and also the planning board as we go through this meeting. Applicants shall be prepared to share their presentation material and staff is not responsible for the application presentations. Lauren, would you like to comment about public comment?
Certainly. Thank you. For members of the public wishing to address the board, there will be appropriate times for each of the public hearings that we will take public comment. And we would ask that you input your name and address into the question and answer function. You can either leave written comments there for the board to have in the record, or you can also just state your name and address and we will take that as an indication that you'd like to address the board and we'll promote you to panelists so that you can utilize your microphone and camera to speak to the board. We do have a three-minute maximum for public comment. We ask that you not be repetitive and try to refrain from stating things that have already been mentioned. So, thank you.
And I just want to further state that for people that were at the hearing last week, we do have all the information that you have included. And therefore, if you go back over the issues, we will indicate to you that we wish you to step back because we already know the information you're providing. So, thank you. I want to make a notice to the public and the planning board. The planning board members are requested to refrain from making superfluous comments regarding the physical feature of projects. To omit bias, personal views of aspects of projects should not be articulated. Planning board members are required to notify the public if they have conflicts of interest regarding any issue being discussed before the board. Planning members will recuse themselves from discussions where they have the potential for conflict of interest. Finally, the public is expected to state name and address and indicate whether they own property in town, either raw or developed land. So with that, we're going to begin our first item of business, which is a continuation of the deliberation on a project that we have been reviewing for site plan review at 20, 25, and 30, Situate Hill, Situate Road. And what will happen is the members of the project team will comment as to whether there's anything that is to be stated from them. Otherwise, the planning board will begin deliberation and condition the project. And we're going to agree on conditions. There'll be no public comment taken. And planning board members are there to question or to conclude any questions that they have. So with that, let's please begin on the basis of the documentation that we received regarding conditions on this project.
Excuse me, Ms. Glassmeyer. Can I ask a couple of questions before we get started?
You may.
Thank you. So you indicate a number of protocols in terms of our meeting and our participation conditions within the meeting. I haven't seen these or heard these in the specific language that you just stated. Could you distribute these in a form that is legible for all planning members by email so that we can see what these new newer improved conditions are at the start of the meeting? And 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 the project that's that's, we'll call it Situate Hill, the Situate Hill Project for deliberation. The planning board can ask questions of the applicant during deliberation. Certainly, we would expect to have a robust discussion of the draft decision. But we, we aren't limited in asking questions, specific questions of the applicant or the applicant's team during deliberations. But generally speaking, we wouldn't. These would be points of clarification that would be part of the deliberation. We, we have closed the public meeting, so we wouldn't be taking any public comments as a part of our deliberation. It's a planning board only kind of activity. But we can, we are allowed to, to reach out and ask specific questions.
That is correct, of the applicant.
So, so how do you, so we have, do we have counsel here?
I'll speak to that point. We, Carolyn Murray will be joining us. She did have a conflict, so she is likely to be a bit late. But I will say that the draft decision that was distributed to the planning board, I also distributed to Ms. Murray, and she gave me her comments today. So the draft that we can work off of tonight includes incorporates her, you know, red line edits that she had suggested. And I would say nothing majorly substantial in, you know, context that she had recommended be edited.
Okay, and if you don't mind my asking, Lauren, did you put together the, the draft decision?
I did.
Fully with comments from our, that you thought should be incorporated from our public hearings? And basically, anything that was sort of came up, you, you put in?
I did, and I also received some draft conditions from Tom Callahan that I incorporated in the decision. And then there's two other conditions that I incorporated. One was about ADA and MAB regulations, because I knew that that was an important topic to Mr. Brewer. And then also, we had our public safety between, it was a combination of our public safety officers, our assessor, and our DPW staff that indicated that they'd like to see a roadway name change. So that's Situate Hill because of its geographic location. There's an actual geographical feature called Situate Hill that they'd like to see it Situate Hill Road or Street, whatever be an appropriate term. So I've added a condition to reflect that so that the applicant can work with our assessor to get an appropriate, you know, designation of a street name. So that was the other condition that I added into the draft for your review.
That's, that's great. Now, I've printed out a copy and, and put handwritten notes on my copy that, that we can review along. But, but would, will there be somebody going through the draft decision as a way to start this off?
Yes, I can do that. I'm prepared to screen share the red line version that I got. So that will be the most current edition that I had circulated along with our council's comments today. And we can incorporate more edits to that tonight. We've done that in the past where we've sort of live out in a document. So I'm prepared to do that if the board would like to proceed that way.
That's acceptable to me.
Let's get on with it.
All right, let me get a document up and, and also just announce that Mark Trider is the applicant here. And he's here to answer any questions that the board may have as we go through deliberation. All right, can you see the document on my screen right now?
Again.
All right, let me just set myself up so that we are tracking changes. And then I'm just going to notate that we're doing this live. All right, so what we have here is our, this is our site plan review decision that I've drafted for the board as just explained. This is just sort of the factual cover letter that would go to the town clerk to notify the factual situation and what the votes were. Of course, we'll fill that in as appropriate, depending on how, you know, the votes are taken tonight. You go through general information. This is standard for any of our application procedures. We talk about the record set of plans, submissions that came from the applicant, the peer review, board and committee comment submissions, anything with a yellow sign that you see here is just a note for me, so that I will go back and factually check a date that something was either filed or submitted. And I just, I didn't have a time to fully do that, but I wanted you guys to see this working draft before. So I can certainly put that, that's all just factual points of clarification. Then you'll see the procedural history and background. Again, this just goes through factual, when the application, what the proposal was, when it was filed, when it was run in a public hearing notice, et cetera, et cetera. And really, the meat of what the board should be discussing tonight is the findings section. So the board agrees with that. These are findings that the board agrees with pursuant to the parameters laid out in site plan review. And then before.
Excuse me, Lauren, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, the, the version that I have that I printed out was, it doesn't have the, the red line stuff?
Yes, I just got the red line today from, from council so that we, the red line is just an addition. You're seeing the things that are red are slightly modified from the version that you have. That's why you're not seeing.
No problem, no, no problem. Thank you.
So the findings, and we can go through these one by one in a moment, but just in continuing the format of document. This, following the findings, you'll see the conditions of approval, which came from Tom Callahan had sent some over. And then the other two that I stated, which were in response to Clark Brewer's concerns and the concerns from public safety. And then following all of these conditions, you'll just see the signature page. So it's a relatively, you know, straightforward document. So with that, I'll begin at the top of the findings section. I may make this a little bit bigger so the board and the members of the public can see this. So the findings section, this is based on the plans, documents, and testimony received below. And this goes through each of the sections of site plan review that the board needs to make a finding on to proceed. So the first is that the proposed development will be harmonious with not harmful or injurious or objectionable to the existing or future uses in the area. We just have that no evidence was presented that this project would be harmful, injurious, et cetera. The second, natural resource will not be unduly exhausted. Again, no evidence was presented that this project would result in undue exhaustion of natural resources. The third finding, erosion will be controlled during and after construction, will not adversely affect adjacent or neighboring property or public facilities and services. And here we have a comment that the, the board finds that the erosion control measures set forth by the Conservation Commission and the Stormwater Management Process are presumed sufficient. And this is just a typical, this is standard for what the board has found in other site plan reviews. That's how I got this language. Because, you know, the Conservation Commission really does have a jurisdiction over the stormwater runoff in those processes. The fourth finding, increase or decrease runoff due to development on the site will not be injurious to any downstream property owners or cause hazardous conditions on adjoining streets. No evidence was presented as such. And this is that the proposed development will not result in undue pollution of ground or surface waters, whether fresh or salt. What I drafted for you was the board is satisfied with proper management and maintenance of stormwater management systems consistent with the stormwater report dated, et cetera. This is where we have a comment from council, and I just have to move something on the screen so I can see it. So this is what, what Carolyn inserted here, Carolyn Murray, our town council, just looking to confirm whether the board refers to proper management and maintenance in this paragraph. If it's relying on a BHB plan or a different document, I will factually correct that and make sure that we have the correct document reference that she suggests. And then the question is, will any mitigation be required if show, if so, we should add that with proper maintenance and management and maintenance and compliance, the mitigation measures noted in this decision that no adverse impacts will be suffered. I don't believe that there's any mitigation measures that have been put forth or required. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And then the next finding would be that the movement of vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the site and, you know, in relation to access streets will be safe and convenient. What I've drafted for you here was based on the plans, document, and testimony in the traffic demand study. The board finds the applicant has submitted evidence that the movement of vehicular pedestrian traffic within the site in relation to access streets will be safe and convenient. And that the board encourages the applicant to coordinate with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for planned transportation improvements in the Route 3A corridor and is supportive of installation of traffic calming measures on the state highway as deemed appropriate through the state's transportation improvement program. And then what Carolyn added for us is lastly, in pursuant to section 312.6-E, the board finds it subject to conditions of approval set forth below that the proposal is a suitable development for the area and will not result in significant detriment to the neighborhood or natural qualities of town. So with that, I'll pause and see if the board has any comments on the findings or any suggested edits.
Direct your questions to me so that I can route them correctly. Clark Brewer, would you like to speak?
I, I don't have any comments on the, on the conditions of approval. I'm sorry, on the findings section, we haven't gotten to the conditions of approval yet. No comments.
Thank you very much, Tom Callahan. Paul Grady.
No comment.
Eric Potter.
No comment right now.
And I have no comment other. I've reviewed it this afternoon and feel it represents the experience that we've gone through.
Thank you. I'll move forward with conditions of approval. So here, I'll just run through, how would you like me to do this? And I'm sure, do you want me to go one by one? Or do you want me to just continue until someone raises a hand to stop me?
I would say that why don't you proceed through them? Go through one, stop, look and see if there's any hands. They'll direct to me. I'll direct to you, and then we'll just proceed.
Okay, great. So the first condition of approval, this project shall conform to accessibility standards set forth by the Americans with Disabilities Act or the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, whichever is more stringent. I see a hand raised.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would just put instead of or and because compliance with both is is, is important. One is a Civil Rights Act and the other is a, a building code.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment? Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Second, the applicant sell sheet, I'm sorry, shall, shall seek designation through the Cohasset Assessor's Office of an alternate street name for the proposed way on the property currently referred to as Situate Hill. The board and the town's public safety officers, which Carolyn Murray asked us to confirm, and I have a I have the communication that I will reference and include in our plans and documents. So the board's town and public safety officers have determined that the street name Situate Hill is insufficient for emergency response and should be renamed to Situate Hill Road, Situate Hill Drive, or another comparable alternative as deemed accessible by the town assessor.
All right, are there any comments from planning board members regarding this? No comments, let's move on.
And now this is where we begin. These ones came from our member, Tom Callahan. There's a couple, I'll just note before we get into the meat of these that a couple of modifications that I inserted were, rather than referring to Situate Hill Road, I changed it to access roadway because we're not sure what it's going to be named yet. But then moving on, the project shall not exceed the lot coverage and lot clearing maximums as set forth in the Table of Area Regulations and Article 11 of the zoning bylaw as amended at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Per that amendment, no site clearing work may be commenced without proper prior clearance by the building inspector or, and/or the planning board.
Any comments on that item? Let's move on. Thank you.
Understanding that the applicant does not own the properties abutting the entrance of the access roadway at Route 3A, applicant shall never thus make good faith effort to work with the abutting owners and/or town to keep vegetation trimmed for a suitable distance in each direction from that intersection so as not to obstruct sight lines. The applicant shall further cooperate with the town and the MassDOT Highway Division as necessary when the state commences the Route 3A corridor road improvements work.
Any comments from board members? No, let's move on.
Applicant shall take whatever permitting steps are necessary to install and shall install a stop sign at the painted stop line at the intersection of the way currently referred to as Situate Hill and Route 3A.
Any comments from the board members? No, let's move on.
The board recognizes that this project is located on property that was part of a previously approved commercial subdivision for which the subdivision developer slash owner was required to provide surety to ensure completion of subdivision roads. Before any certificate of occupancy shall issue for the present project, the access road to the site must fully comply with subdivision road standards. Issues between the current owner slash subdivision developer and applicant must be resolved to the extent that there is a division of responsibility between them for this completion. The applicant shall submit to the board a copy of whatever written agreement currently, currently exists or is entered into between the applicant and the current owner regarding responsibility for completion of the road under the approved commercial subdivision. Any, oh, and this, this piece that's highlighted here is recommended to be stricken because it's beyond the jurisdiction of the planning board and site plan review. So I'm going to go ahead and delete that per council's recommendation.
All right, let's, let's move on.
The applicant shall comply with the parking requirements found under section, I'm sorry, Tom.
Do we still, do we still have a performance bond in place for this?
I believe there is.
For the, for the subdivision, I'll check in on the status of that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the gist of that is to make sure there's one in place. If there's a change in ownership coming here, that we still have a performance bond in place. A little surprised.
Mr. Trider has his hand raised.
Yeah, if, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to speak inappropriately or, or whatever. Or, you know, I want to follow the correct procedures here, but there is a lien on the property that can only be lifted through the completion of certain roadwork and utility, utility deliverance. And the property cannot be, and we will not acquire the property without those liens being lifted, which can only come through whatever mechanism the town has to, to ensure that that is the case, which I would imagine is the building inspector. So it's not a performance bond. It is a lien on these lots that the town has that can only be lifted or relieved through the main, the main items being, and the only items to my knowledge, being top coat of the road and also delivery of utilities, I believe, electric, gas, and water.
When are you planning to change title? As soon as, like after this permit, like immediately after this permit?
We, we have a closing date tentatively scheduled for December 1st. So.
Whatever the process is with the lien and the building inspector, there has to be some security to make sure it gets done because if the town has to come in and take over and finish it.
Just a minute, Clark, just a minute, just a minute. Let me call, Tom, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Clark Brewer.
But my understanding is that there's both a performance bond for the remaining work of the commercial subdivision, and there's a lien that's in place for the completion of the, or pending the completion of the, of the subdivision work. Final coating and utilities, I think that's, that's the main substance of it. But I believe they're both in place. It probably would be a good idea to confirm exactly what they are and that they are both in place. And, or one or the other might take the place of the, the surety that Tom is talking about.
All right, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you. I'll confirm the status of the items that have been noted here. And I'll also just add that this condition in itself does give some security to the town because that will hold up the certificate of occupancy for this project, which in and of itself is going to be impetus to have that completed. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move on.
Thank you. So the next condition number seven is the applicant shall comply with the parking requirements found under section 307.1G as calculated pursuant to the definition of net floor area found in section 300-2.1. The board has no authority to grant waivers from parking requirements. I fixed that. And does not find that the section 307.1 is applicable when section 307.1G is directly on point. Should parking regulations change before full buildout is achieved, the applicant may seek amendment of the number of parking spaces required from the building inspector and pursuant to section 312.6 as a minor modification to this permit approval, I'm sorry, of this approval. In the interim, or if such regulations do not change, to minimize the need to construct spaces on would otherwise be unpaid land area, the applicant shall make the roadways through the site one way with parking along each side so as to gain spaces within already necessary paved areas. Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I wrote that before we came into our understanding in our last meeting about what the definition of net floor area was. So I'm not intending to change that understanding that we arrived at a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on.
Number eight, any future changes in building numbers, configuration, size, and/or use shall be deemed a major modification of this approval, requiring further site plan approval by the board pursuant to section 312.6G. If any resident uses, if, I'm sorry, if any residential use is proposed and/or permitted in the future, a new site plan application will be required in addition to any other permit applications. Such use would require under the zoning and effect of the time. And then this permit is subject to obtaining necessary permits from other boards, including but not limited to a stormwater management permit and the permit necessary for wastewater facilities. Such permits are incorporated herein by reference. If any subsequent permits alter the plans on which it's permitted and approved, the applicant will inquire of the, if the board, of the board, whether such will be treated as a minor or major modification. And then finally, in addition from our council, pursuant to section 312.6H, the site plan approval shall remain effective for a period of one year from the date of approval, unless prior to the expiration of such one-year period, the applicant makes substantial effort to build in accordance with the site plan approval, or unless the planning board votes to extend the time and make substantial effort to build for a period not to exceed one additional year. Requests to extend the time to make substantial effort to build must be filed prior to the expiration of the site plan approval. And then that's the end of our conditions. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing and see if any board members have any further comments.
Lauren, I thought that was excellent. I do have a comment about the, about the, the stone retaining walls to, to ameliorate the grade changes. And I guess I, it would start with a question of the applicant. What, there's two details. One is a modular retaining wall and the other is a, is a granite stone placed slope on 5.01. I don't see anything that references the modular retaining wall. Is that being used? And if so, where?
Clark, I wish I, I, you know, that's an answer that my civil engineer will have to get back to you on. I, I don't have that answer for you. I apologize.
Okay, I mean, we do have grade changes that are, you know, like 30 feet, but it, it looks like based on the, the key code that you're using, the, the placed stone slope, which is a one-to-one slope that, that I, I think is the safer of the two options. I don't see anything in the plans that has a keyed modular retaining wall. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna not make any comments on this based on, on the, what, what the submitted plans are. Any more comment? But, but I'm happy to, to, to review and discuss it with any of the planning, planning board members.
Do any of the planning board members wish to discuss this item? I don't see anybody that's raising their hand. So with that, I'd like to ask planning board members if you are ready to close the deliberations and make a finding.
So we would vote on the application?
That is correct.
I'm ready to vote.
May I get a motion, please?
Move that we issue a positive plan review permit, subject to the findings and conditions as presented by Ms. Lynn with the further administrative fill-ins that she has to do.
Can I get a second? Amy Glassmeyer, I. Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Paul Grady.
I.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, I.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you, Mr. Trider. I'll be in touch.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.
All right.
All right, let's move on to our next item, which is a continuation of the public hearing on 808 Chief Justice Cushing. which is a continuation of the public hearing on eight oh eight Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Uh this discussion will take place um with the planning board members. In addition, there is a request from the attorney representing some of the neighbors in the community that's adjacent to this site that would like to make a set of comments. And I have awarded ten minutes for that presentation. Uh and then we will open the just and if and then um after the planning board members have spoken, after the attorney has spoken, we will entertain comments from additional public uh members. Um and then we will um step back and um see where we're at. So let's begin with uh the planning board members. Or Lauren, please bring us up to speed on uh the the site. And if there is any additional information from the applicant that we are, we should receive, we should receive it after you have summarized where we stand. Um we do, we have also a peer review that we should hear from that is in relationship to the traffic question um at eight oh eight Chief Justice Highway. So with that, Lauren, would you please summarize where we are?
Absolutely. Thank you. So this is a continued public hearing that was opened. It had been continued a couple of times uh without any deliberation as we are awaiting uh final road traffic report from the applicant that they have submitted. And I'll turn it over in a moment to Greg Morse and Todd Amlang, who are the engineer and the applicant respectively. And then I'll just announce um Patrick Brennan is our peer review engineer from Amory Engineering, who I know is an attendee, there's just a lot, so I'm trying to find him again. Um so with that, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to uh Mr. Morse to update us on what has changed since the last time we heard from you. So thank you.
Thank you. I I did see Mr. Brewer raising his hand. I don't know if Clark had anything.
It would be it would be out of um first, we want to hear from our peer reviewers.
That that's the that's the chair's discretion, but I was going to ask that the applicant present any new material and then we get a response from our peer reviewers before we take public comments. So I think we've got that queued up.
Great. Thank thank you. For the record, my name's Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer Morse Engineering. I'm representing the applicant, also the owner of the property, Todd Amlang Plumbing and Heating. Um this has been a continued hearing for construction of a new commercial building at this property. As you're aware, the property is at eight oh eight CJC Highway. It's in the Highway Business District. It's a little over half an acre in size. There's an existing building on the site which used to be occupied by a pool service company, uh also had an apartment in the building. The proposal is to take that building down and replace it with a new tradesman uh building with office and retail space as well. Uh the building we will be supported by new utility connections, uh new septic system, new water service connections uh in a new parking lot surface. The parking lot has twenty parking spaces. Uh the drainage at the site is handled onsite via an infiltration system. Um the site has received a stormwater permit from the Conservation Commission. That was as well, it was peer reviewed um again by Mr. Brennan from Amory Associates. Since the last meeting, what we have submitted, we submitted a traffic analysis. We had our traffic engineer Vanas Associates put together a detailed report. They looked at the conditions at the site today. They looked at mass DOTs. Upcoming work potentially on Route three A. Um and you'll see in the Vanas study, they made a number of recommendations to be incorporated. Those recommendations, we incorporated into a set of revised site plans. We submitted a letter on October eighth with a revised set of site plans that incorporated those comments from Vanas, primarily having to do with signage um and access onto the site, uh limiting access from three A as one-way access onto the site directing all of the traffic to Brewster Road as a two-way uh in and out. We provided at that same time a photometric plan documenting light at the site. Lights are proposed um with cutoff at the property lines uh so that there's no light spill over onto a budding properties. Um and that's where I'll turn it back to you. You have the traffic analysis that was requested. Uh the conclusion of that was that this would not have an adverse impact at that location. Um and we've made the recommendations of the traffic engineer. Thank you.
Um uh Lauren Lynn, shall shall we have our peer review now?
Sure, yes, we have Pat Brennan from Amory Engineers.
Um thank you, Ms. Chair. Um Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. I did review the the traffic um impact statement. And I agree with with the majority of it. However, the the traffic count did not take into account the retail aspect of the building. It only took into account the contractor base and the office use. Um and the retail use is a lot more intense than the contractor base or the office use. So um if if retail use is planned on this property, that report really needs to be done, including the the retail use. And that's because with without including that and if retail use is proposed, the traffic assessment really doesn't mean anything right now.
Uh thank you for that. Um Ms. Lynn, what is your recommendation in light of that uh last comment?
I would recommend, um well, first, if the applicant would like to respond, if there's a proposed retail component to the project and if not, then the board could condition their approval based on the fact that if there was a retail use to be added, that it would have to return for further review.
Mr. Morse, do you wish to respond or is Mr. Amlang wish to respond?
Hey, I'll respond to that. I mean, at this at this point, we don't have any retail tenants proposed for the building. Um retail isn't allowed use in the zoning district. And so what we are proposing to do, though, is on the first and second floor of that front portion of building is to have space that could be used either as office or as retail space. Um as was suggested by the town planner, you know, it it did, the traffic analysis did take into account, I believe, office space at the site. If there was a retail use to be brought onto the site, perhaps we could come back in front of the planning board and do an assessment at that time. I think retail uses um generate varying traffic counts depending on what that use is um and who that tenant is. Certain retail establishments demand a higher traffic volume than others. Uh so that should be looked at on a case-by-case basis, I would think.
Uh thank you. I'd like to ask the peer review. In a normal situation where you are putting in a a road or a an access and egress uh situation like this, would you want to know in advance what the real the real potential use was so that you were designing to the real potential use rather than it waiting to um have a change and then already have a an entrance and exit uh operating?
Um you know, I don't think the change in use to retail would necessarily um change the design of the entrance and exit. Um what what it may do is require some off-site mitigation. If there, if the um capacity shows that the you know, the intersection of Brewster Road and Free A cannot handle the additional traffic or something to that effect, then you would um, you know, there'd probably be off-site mitigation that would be needed. But I I don't believe it would change the actual driveways that they're proposing at this point in time. And I do agree that the one-way in off Route three A um is the right way to go. I I do not, I I believe that vehicles exiting onto three A from the site with it being with the driveway being that close to Brewster Road is a safety hazard. Um and you know, it was discussed in previous hearings that along these these major arterial highways, um you really want to limit the amount of curb cuts that you have onto the roadway, which is why they were proposing and why the the traffic impact assessment um re- recommended that they only use Brewster Road as the exit. Um but I I agree with Greg when when he says that there are different um capacities associated or or trip generation associated with various uh retail uses. Um my main thing is that retail regardless is typically a lot more of an intense um traffic generator than office or the contractor bay situation that we have here. So you know, if if the board were were to approve the project, as Ms. Lynn mentioned, um you know, I I think um making a condition that any retail use that were to be proposed there would have to come back to the board with a new traffic assessment to show that the intersections and the driveways um are sufficient to um accommodate that additional traffic.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. So there's no temporal difference. Once it's not going to matter, the exit and the entrance is going to be the same, but there'll be other mitigating features that might arise.
That would be my guess, correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Clark Brewer?
Yeah, quick comment on that. I mean, the the engineering plan says office space. The architectural plan says office slash retail. Um you know, if there's an impact on on the traffic count um for retail over office, I I mean, I I think it makes sense to just condition the project as office space in the front and and tradesmen um uh facilities in the back. Uh and if there is any retail in the future, they just come back for a modification.
Um thank you for that. Uh uh Mr. Potter?
I would second what Clark is saying. And Todd is a local guy. He's a very respected in the community. He's got it all early in office situate. Um while I don't know Mr. Amlang personally, um the the proposal from um Greg and in his team and seems to be reputable, they they've answered all of our questions. I don't see any real reason to really push back on this. And and the proposal by by Mr. Brennan that if it were to go to retail, that they would come back in front of the board seems like a a very, very great concession considering Todd's local business and you know, uh relationships and in his is is proximity to the community. Um you know, it's my opinion that that we should just put this to a vote and kind of let them move on with it. They've done a great job presenting it, and I know the traffic concerns the neighborhood have been important, but um they've done the best they can with it and and not to negate the 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 neighborhood's concerns. But considering the applicant here and the team in place, I I do think there's got to be some level of of assurance that they're going to do the community right, and uh I I do think we need to move to a vote.
Well, thank you, but we all we have to go through the public hearing and including public discussion. Clark, are Paul Grady?
Do we have the neighbors, attorney and neighbors to hear from first?
Yes, we we will help for them as soon as the planning board members are finished. Do you have something, Mr. Grady, you'd like to say?
I just did. Thank you.
Okay, uh Mr. Callahan?
Um I want to ask both the applicant and our uh Mr. Brennan. Um has all your traffic analysis been done in light of what the state is planning? Which I understand it is to be a turn lane in the middle of the road to be able to turn from either direction. Because it seems to me if that's at seventy-five percent and that's going to happen, we should be planning everything in light of that.
Um they.
Anybody can jump in.
Yeah, the the traffic impact assessment, they did, they did take a look at what the plans that the state has. Um but they weren't necessarily relying on them because this project, if it's approved, is going to be built probably long before those improvements are going to be um undertaken. Um I think anything the state does after the fact would only help the situation here. Um and so they, to to answer your question, it was looked at in the traffic impact assessment.
Um your comment, Mr. Brennan, was that, you know, generally speaking, and this has always been my understanding that on a road like three A that especially with the speed limit, minimizing curb cuts is important. Is anybody given thought of having no curb cut on three A? It seems to me that a managed turn into a side street is safer. And I'm thinking about cars who are coming on three A South. And even if it's an entrance only, they're going to try to make a left-hand turn. Now, that might be safer when the middle turn lane gets built, but it's not very safe right now. Um whereas Brewster Road is a dedicated roadway that has left turns all the time. And on certain weekends, it's controlled by a police officer, a detail officer.
Yeah, to my knowledge, that that wasn't, um I don't believe that was looked at in the traffic assessment. Maybe Greg knows whether or not they they asked.
What would be what would be safer, keeping it as proposed as an entrance-only access point from three A or eliminating the access point altogether? What's safer? Ah, that seems to be, that's our primary concern in in the site plan review, and that's my primary concern.
I just ask a quick question. Has anyone ever gone to their plumber's office? Just a general question. Has anyone ever gone to the plumber's office?
I have driven around that. I haven't gone into the office, but I have circulated around the um the uh access and and.
So you did a drive-by or your plumber's office?
Well, I I drove by and I drove through the development and I drove back around because we had Marion Road and we were also doing it.
No, but what I'm asking is is when you hire a plumber, do you go to the plumber's office? Or electrician's office? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the point.
It's a general question, and I and I'm and I'm being passive aggressive here for a reason because if it were a retail space, we would have concerns, right? There'd be traffic in and out. But we have a, we have a finite number of people. No one's going to the plumber's office or electrician's office or their roofer's office. We know the people that are coming in and out of there for the most part, right? And 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 I understand if it changes to retail, we've got a problem there, which a problem which I would want to address, right? I would want to control that.
I get I get the I get the point you're making, Eric. It's very very well taken. And I I would agree that while there's no, until there's a retail use, this isn't a major safety concern. But I would just put it out there on the radar that if we do have a retail use and by that point, you know, the new middle turn lane, we want to rethink the whole access to this property at that time.
I agree with you, Tom, because I hate three A, so I agree.
Okay, um okay, thank you both. Uh Paul Grady?
Um I'm going to agree with Eric, I'm going to beg to differ a little bit. Uh you know, I run an office that I have service vehicles coming in and out of that office every day. They're coming in and out of my parking lot, my own service vehicles. I have delivery trucks drop off, and I do know that can pose a danger. Um we've had accidents, people have T-boned one of my trucks. But I do agree with Eric, but I also have to recognize that you know, even in a plumbing office, oil company, or along those lines, you do have service vehicles coming in and out in any given point in time. So it's not a true traffic study because it's a completely different situation. So that's what I would throw on that one is I think that safety should be paramount. We've had to do it at my office where the street is basically one-way and it's a two-way street, but our vehicles only go right. Just something I'd be cognizant of, that's all.
All right, so we've heard about a general concern about accessing um the site by three A and whether or not to move everything onto Brewster. We've heard that we do not have sufficient information at this time to indicate that there will be retail and at such time as retail emerges, that there will be a condition indicating that they will need to come back to us for a modification. Um and we have a comment from a business person who also operates a uh an organization which has vehicles and there's some indication that that vehicles coming in and out cause traffic. With all of that said, at this point, I um I'd like to ask the planning member, planning board members, is there any other factual piece of information that either you need or you wish to deposit? Otherwise, I'd like to allow the public to speak.
Uh I withhold uh the right to for to request additional information. I I but I would like to hear the public comments first.
Right, thank you. Um Lauren, could you please um tee up the public? And also, if the if it is the the pub is if it's the citizens' legal counsel, ask them to please introduce themselves, ask them who they represent uh and make sure that we have the list of the people that are represented by this legal counsel.
Certainly, thank you. So just a reminder, we've had a couple of more uh members of the public join us since I announced this last. But if you wish to address the board, if you could insert your name and address into the question and answer, you can either leave written comments or just note that you'd like to speak on this item and we will uh promote you as as necessary and appropriate. And just please, three minutes max. Do not be repetitive. Try not to, you know, repeat things that have already been said. And with that, I'm going to introduce um Mr. Christopher Sini. He is the. And with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Christopher Sini. He is the applicant. I'm sorry, not the applicant. He is the attorney on behalf of many of the residents who had reached out and requested additional time. As he is several residents that he's representing. So if Mr. Sini could just state your your name, your affiliation, and who you're representing, that'd be that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Christopher Senny. I'm an attorney. I live in Brewster on the Cape. I have a small land use law firm that does work primarily on the Cape, but also. At other towns nearby. And I represent about forty-two households, all of whom. Travel down Brewster Road as the only access way to to their the streets where their homes are. And they have a number of concerns. I do appreciate the chance to address the board. The chairwoman asked me to keep this to ten minutes, and I certainly will, but I do appreciate the chance to speak. As you know, Brewster Road is a is a privately owned road, which means that. Every property that a bus Brewster Road. Has a say in how it's used and how it's maintained, including including eight oh eight. Cushing Highway. It's about twenty-five feet, twenty-one feet in width, according to the traffic study by. The applicant's consultant, and it's not really designed for commercial traffic, and this proposal would put. Commercial traffic on Brewster Road. We have not had any dialogue with the applicant or the applicant's traffic consultant, and we would like to. And I would like to suggest that this matter be continued. Again, so that we could meet and discuss the traffic concerns that we have. We have hired a traffic consultant ourselves. It is Kim Hasavarian of Transportation Engineering Planning and Policy. Located in Salem, New Hampshire. They do work here in Massachusetts. They have read the the traffic report that has been submitted by the applicant. And they have pointed out to us, not in writing yet, but they are working on a letter report that we would like to submit. That there are two ways in which this. Site plan could be improved with regard to Brewster Road. One is that the curb cut on Brewster Road. Could be moved back further away from Route three A. That would allow more room to queue. When you are a car leaving the area and turning on to Route three A, either either left or right. This project will increase the queuing. Now, that's very clear from the traffic report, and there really isn't sufficient room. For appropriate queuing where this curb cut is proposed. So we would like to talk with the applicant. And their expert about possibly moving that curb cut further away from the intersection. The other thing is that we we would like to explore the possibility of a right turn lane. At the intersection of Brewster and Route three A, that would ease some of the traffic problem that already exists there, even even without this. New proposed use. And I think a meeting would be very helpful, and I feel as though we've organized ourselves now. There's one attorney representing. A considerable number of residents. We have a traffic expert. I think we have a mechanism in place where we could have a productive. Meeting if the applicant would be willing to do that. Both curb cuts, the one on three A and the one on Brewster, do not meet the zoning bylaw requirements. Of a hundred and fifty feet separation from the intersection. That is section three hundred dash seven point three C one. I have read in the record that the position is that this is grandfathered, and it might be. The way that works is where you have a legally nonconforming condition. It can be maintained, but it shouldn't be expanded, and I think it would be a close question on whether. This change of the way the Brewster Road driveway has been used historically to what it will become is an expansion. I don't know the answer to that question. Town Council may be able to give guidance here. If it was an expansion, it would require what we call a section six finding issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Where the Zoning Board of Appeals would make a finding that what's proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Already adjacent properties suffer from and accommodate traffic. That is not operating well through this intersection. Cohasset Village Greenery across three A from this property hires. Traffic control staff on on weekends to assist with turning from three A to. To the businesses and vice versa, and the bank that exists across Brewster Road from this proposed driveway. Has it's it's supposed to be exit only, but cars do drive in the bank parking lot. And they do skirt around and access Route three A when there is a when there is a long queue. So it isn't functioning very well. In fact, this intersection, according to the traffic analysis, has a grade of E. Which is at full capacity now. And we will be adding, this would add a hundred car trips a day, fourteen. In one hour at the peak hour in the morning and seventeen at the peak hour in the evening. So thi- this is a considerable impact, even though in terms of gross numbers. It may not be considered significant. It really is in terms of how the circulation and this intersection work. The study talks in terms of what is the delay, and it has a factor of greater than fifty seconds, but if you go to the tables. It's actually a more it's a hundred and seventeen seconds, which is which is getting more considerable. We have some other concerns as well. Our primary concern is traffic, and again, we would like to meet with with our experts. Noise is a concern. This property abuts residences, and there are a number of residents close by. A contractor bay building can generate considerable noise. We'd like the site plan to consider hours of operation, whether activities can take place outdoors. Whether bay doors should be closed during operations, and what is the ability of this building to to dampen sound? Drainage is a concern. There is already water that collects on Brewster Road. We know there's an approved. I mean, a peer review endorsed stormwater management plan. I asked the the town's consultants to take a look at that. There is a claim. About how much water flows off of the permeable pavement, and I I'm skeptical about. That claim, although I am not a stormwater management engineer, and we're not going to hire one. We're hiring a traffic engineer, but I I urge caution. I'm concerned that more water travels off. Permeable pavement than what is shown in the study. Snow management is limited here by a condition that where it blocks visibility, it will be taken from the site. We're concerned that snow that piles up should be taken from the site for other reasons too, including the drainage impact. And there are quite a few trucks that are going to come in to place fill on this property. And we would like to explore with the board and the applicant. Restricting that in and out of the the trucks that will bring, I think, a hundred and twenty-five truckloads. Of fill to the property to the Route three A entrance, even if that requires traffic control mechanisms. These are our concerns. We do ask that the board consider continuing it again. I know the applicant must be anxious, but these are real concerns. As the peer reviewer pointed out, the traffic study itself doesn't take into consider into consideration the retail. And yes, you could condition it on the applicant coming back, but there are enough mentions of retail in this application that really. You should have in front of you a traffic study that does address all of the possible uses. Those are all of my comments. I do hope that the board will allow some of my clients to speak if they feel that I didn't. Cover a topic that's important to them. They they know not to be repetitive. They know they've already spoken their piece to some extent with submissions and with comments at the last hearing. But if if a client of my office asks to be recognized, I hope you'll indulge, because I I might miss things. I. I'm new to this matter, and I'm I'm getting up to speed as as well as I can. Thank you very much for your time, and consider it.
Hi, I'm sharing muted.
Eric, do you want to talk while I'm I'm asking?
Very, very quickly, just very, very quickly, so I'm not one to dismiss the attorney being retained by the the neighborhood. Or the residents of a community and forty-two people is a lot of people, so. I will change my position and say that if forty-two people are represented by one attorney in one voice, then. Then I do think that 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 raises merit for there to be a conversation to be had. I think Attorney Sini did a fantastic job of expressing concerns of the neighborhood people. And I would I would recommend that 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 before a decision is made that that a conversation be had. And and I would recommend also perhaps maybe a concession would be that in in similar to many streets in Quincy where you're cutting through to go to Boston, that there are restrictions. In put in place that restrict certain turns and certain access for certain times of the day where there's high volume, which would be a kind of. Maybe a a a middle-of-the-road agreement that both parties can reach, you know, that that whereby that there it could be access at certain times of the day and restricted at certain times of the day. And I I do think that there are other concerns that with regards to snow removal in in. And and water runoff that need to be addressed, and I don't see where a conversation can hurt. That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Potter. I saw a request to speak from Mr. Callahan.
If you want to defer to Ms. George, one of the butters before I speak, my mind mind can wait.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Would you like to tee up Ms. George?
Yes, just give me a moment. Again, there's a lot of attendees, and Jen Oram, who's helping me, is not. It's not having she's not able to access the meeting. Susan George, if you could state your name and address to the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes. Please don't repeat items that have already been said.
Hi, this is Susan George. I live at seventy-four Brewster Road, and just a quick question. This is pertaining to the traffic study, which I did go through and read all ninety-nine pages. The question I have is, is this a valid study since it was only conducted during two days, August eighteenth and nineteenth? It's not very representative in that timeframe of the traffic going in and out of the neighborhood, particularly now that. I mean, particularly since it was, first of all, conducted during. A very, very unbusy week traffic-wise, because people are on vacation, and second, because school's not in session, so. None of the traffic back and forth where kids are driving to school and or the buses going in and out of the neighborhood. So. My concern about that traffic study is that it really is not representative of the actual traffic going in and out of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. George. We will log that comment. Let me first, Paul, find out if there's any further public comments, so we get them bunched in a row. Lauren, do we have anyone further who would like to speak?
There's no one else who's indicated that they wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll return to the planning board members. Paul Grady?
Did the neighbor's attorney, the neighbor's attorney say that they were conducting another traffic study and they had some more information they wanted to submit?
They did. They did indicate that, yes.
I'd like to see that.
So Lauren, can you summarize the recommendation of the lawyer as a with the assumption that this. Hearing would be continued to such a time that the residents and the various professionals and the. Property owner at eight oh eight actually sit down together and talk about various ways for this to be better configured for everyone?
Sure. So first, I'm actually going to ask the board, just in terms of process and and setting precedent. I want to remind the board again that this is in this is a highway business district that this site is in. There are rights that go along with that. And that this board is doing site plan review because of the trigger of two hundred square feet of commercial space that, you know, you have certain parameters to stay in. I do. I just want to remind everyone that that this is an allowed use and that, you know, under the highway business district. And that actually, I just want to share again this here. This is the the map, just so that we're all clear. I know this is Brewster Road that butts up to. The residents and the neighborhood, but just as a reminder, the boundary line, it's not an immediate budding up. I think a lot of people have maybe not a clear conception about exactly where the district lies. So I just want to be clear that this is very much in the highway business district, and I just. My only caution for the board is that we're not treating one applicant unfairly and setting a precedent and requiring them to do items that we haven't done for other applicants. Under site plan review. So I'm I'm actually also going to ask, just in terms of. Pro- process and protocol from our council, you know, what is the procedure for, you know, in a submission for an applicant's? On the record that isn't from the applicant, you know, what how would you suggest that we take this? You know, because here we have members of the public wishing to do an independent traffic study. We already have a peer review traffic study for the board. We have the applicant's traffic study. I'm not really sure how. Best to handle this request.
Thanks, Lauren. It it really is up to the board, because as you said, the applicant has hired. And with all due respect to some prior comments, a reputable firm who's conducted a traffic assessment. We've we have our access to our peer review consultant, who's commented on certain aspects of the project. It's highly unusual for a a third party, you know, who is neither the applicant nor representing the board. To submit their own traffic assessment or any other information for that matter, but that being said, that doesn't mean the board can't allow it. I think what the board can do, however, is give it the weight that the board feels it is entitled to. Now, one, we think that. Traffic consultants who are applying the same standards, the same ITE land use codes. Are going to reach some very similar conclusions, at least as to traffic counts. But there could be some additional mitigation measures that could come out of of sharing of this information. And, you know, I I, again, it is entirely whatever is the will of the board, but. There could be, we could wind up with a slightly better shaped decision. If we at least allow the traffic, the the a butter's traffic.
We have a slight hiccup right now, and while we have the hiccup going, if Tom, you have something quick to say?
With helping the board frame their decision.
Never mind she's speaking again.
Sorry.
So can you go back? There was a big pause of about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sixty seconds, so. You you were suggesting that it is possible for the planning board to make an accommodation to entertain a document produced by. A third party, but the understanding would be that that document receives a weight. Relative to its position within the process.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
Well, on on that particular point. I would say that we should receive citizens' input. I would almost take the position that we're compelled to if they have proper standing before us. Evidence, and it's not up to us to decide to accept it or not accept it. Yes, we will give we will give all the evidence we receive from our consultant, the applicant's consultant, and the abotters, whatever weight it deserves. Attorney Senny brought up the. The nonconformity of the curb cuts. And my first question is, is there any process in front of the zoning board going on right now or or in planned?
Directing that to the.
Yeah, I'm directing that to Greg at the moment.
No, when we laid this project out originally, we met with Bob Egan out at the site, reviewed the access locations. It's our understanding that ZBA action was not required on this, that it was simple site plan review by the planning board.
Was there any?
May I? May I then, Carolyn, I'm going to ask you. Whether this needs variance or perhaps relief under three hundred eight point seven, which deals with extensions and alterations of nonconformities. Is it appropriate for us to make a referral to the zoning board for an opinion or input or even a formal hearing process on their side?
I I I don't know how this site was used previously, so I I did hear Attorney Senny's comments about whether or not this might be an expansion. From what I understand, the curb cuts are not. They're maintaining their present location, but it may go to how has the site been used previously? Um, I don't think we should necessarily make a recommendation that, that it has to go to the zoning board of appeals for special permit finding. I think we could, however, put a condition into the site plan approval decision that would say something to the extent that, um, that this, that, you know, a special permit finding from the ZBA may be required because of the non-conforming status of the curb cuts. The applicant shall seek any necessary relief from the zoning board. Um, I think it might be a conversation to go back to the building inspector and talk about that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if triggering the, you know, get an opinion from the building inspector, you get his decision in ten days and go into the ZBA after that is the process. Or if we can just make a direct referral or, or ask for an opinion of the zoning board because, you know, I think it's clear that the curb cuts are non-conforming. And, you know, the, the, the question up in the air is, is this use, which is different, you know, the, the place hasn't been used for quite some while. I don't even remember its former retail use. But, uh, you know, is this an increasing, increasing the non-conformity by this change in use? I don't know. That's, but that's not our call within site plan review.
Right.
I, I, I don't think we should, you know, our decision should be construed as, uh, okaying this not, the continuance of this non-conformity. So if, if we can, if we can condition that they should go to that route, you know, then that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, Jen Oram wants to weigh in.
Yes. So the, I thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, so the zoning board report of appeals only hears appeals. Um, the planning board cannot refer to them. Um, the route would be to have the building inspector and possibly myself look and see if there are any relief needed. That said, it would be most like the best route would be to condition the, the decision to say that, to get the relief if needed. Um, it was a pool supply shop that had, was in, uh, business. It's been a longstanding business. Um, and it's only been vacant for a, a short bit, I believe, probably during COVID.
I don't recall it being particularly busy and a, a big traffic generator while open.
No, no.
All right. Uh, thank you. That one thing I would like to have though is part of the documentation for the case. If the building inspector did in fact provide some understanding as to whether or not there was any action that needed to be taken as a result of, uh, the project as proposed. I would like to see the documentation that the building inspector actually wrote to see what that says. Cause there has to be documentation. I think, uh, a record like this would be in everybody's best interest to have the full uh, information associated with it. Okay. So, uh, do we have any other public, uh, pub, um, members of the public that would like to speak?
We've had another hand raised, um, since this discussion took place. So I'm going to promote. We have Corinne Lung right now. Corinne, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
And, and please do not repeat, uh, information that we've already received.
Corinne, are you able to unmute yourself? All right, I'm not not hearing from Corinne and not seeing her unmuted. Corinne, if you, if there's comments that you'd like to wish to enter into the record, I would suggest that you can reach out to the planning board office and submit them if you're unable to enter them right now.
Uh, she's stepped away. So, um, Lauren, can you summarize where?
I think Attorney Senny's hand was up again as well. Thought I saw it, but could be wrong.
Okay. Um, uh, Lauren, can you summarize where we are and what your recommendation would be for us to move forward?
Um, sure. So, uh, well, first I'm going to again, just ask the board if there's any specific items or material that they would like to request of the applicant at this time, because what we need to do tonight is determine what other material needs to be entered. We'll continue the public hearing to a time and date certain. And then what the planning board would do would ask the applicant to coordinate, you know, with the material that we received from Mr. Senny on behalf of the residents and the, uh, you know, the reports that they have referenced that they're working on. I see Mr. Brewer has his hand raised.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things that I, I think would be useful for follow-up. Um, if this, uh, if Brewster Way is indeed a private way, um, that, um, uh, then there may or may not be, uh, deeded access rights for this parcel on, on Brewster Way. Um, I, I, I would like to get, uh, some documentation that confirms that, um, yes, indeed, that, that, because they have frontage on Brewster Way, they, they have the right, uh, this parcel has the right to uses it for access as opposed to, um, Route three A. I think that would be very important to get. Um, and I would also ask it, it, I know that the, that, um, Mass DOT had planned some signalization between Beechwood and, huh, Henry Bailey Turner, um, in, in North Situate. And, and I don't know if the signalization is, is at Brewster or in front of the, the Curtis on what's planned. I, I would, I would like, you know, to make another traffic engineer incorporate some of the, the three A preliminary plans. But it would be useful to know if there's any planning or planning changes surrounding the, um, the end of Brewster uh, or the front of this site. And, and those are my, those are my follow-up, um, remarks.
Um, I will make one comment, which is that Brewster is not accepted by the town.
You mean it's, it's a private way? It's not a public way?
But it doesn't mean they don't have access to it.
That's right. I mean, it, it's a different, if it was a public way, then, um, then utilities could be put in and it could be repaved and curb cuts could be reset by the town. Um, if it's a private way, then that's, that's, um, that maintenance, uh, work is, is a different animal. But the question is, does this particular parcel have, um, have deeded access rights to Brewster Way as opposed to a Route three A, which is a public way?
Right. All right. So, um, uh, any other comments from planning board members? What I hear us say then is that we wish to have the opportunity to enable the community to produce the information that they have mentioned to us, including a traffic study, that, that be incorporated into a future discussion, um, with the parties, uh, that, including all of the, the peer, our peer review, Greg Morris, the property owner, the representative of the community, to see if there is a means by which a, something can be negotiated out that, uh, basically is going to be acceptable to all the parties. Uh, Lauren Lynn?
Thank you. I'm just going to propose some, some timeframe so that we can keep this on track so that people have sort of deadlines to follow. Um, because I want to make sure, we typically have a submission deadlines for the planning board material and new items that you can, you know, have adequate time to review. So I'm going to ask, if possible, that on behalf of the residents, if you can have your material submitted, uh, you can submit it to me, Lauren Lynn, Planning Director, and I'll make sure it goes to the planning board and the applicant to coordinate that, uh, cross communication. If you can have that in by, um, no later than November third, that way we give the applicant one week to compile a response. They can have that to us by November tenth, and then we would continue this hearing on November seventeenth at six thirty PM.
Can I get a motion from the members of the planning board regarding this recommendation?
Madam Chair, just in case you might have missed it, there was a question in the Q and A, and I think somebody was looking to speak again.
Oh, thank you. I did not see that. That's, um, thank you, Mr. Winsman. Christine has asked to speak again. So I didn't see Christine ask, but I will find him in attendees. Uh, one moment, please.
Yeah, I can't see.
Oh, here he is. Okay. Our attendee list is growing because we have people joining us for our next agenda item. So thank you, Mr. Senny's back.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, the dates that you proposed, Ms. Lynn, are, are fine. And I do want to clarify, we're not, uh, proposing to do a traffic study. So not, not nearly the involvement that the applicant's expert undertook. We're not going to measure, uh, car trips. What we want a chance to do is to have our traffic engineer s- submit into the file, which we can do by November third, a letter report. It might be as short as two pages. And we would like to review what's in that with the applicant and its engineer ahead of time. But that would address the two potential changes to the configuration that, that I've already spoken to this traffic expert about, we think might have some merit. So this is not a traffic study. It's a, it's a, it's a letter report, a kind of critique, or peer review, and, and we can have that ready by November third and, and the November seventeenth date would be fine with us.
Um, uh, all right, Eric Potter?
I would just urge that the parties, just keep reasonableness in mind here. I think this is easily reconciled by some sort of restriction on access or left turns or whatever it may be between the hours of when kids are getting picked up from school and people going to work and when people are coming home from work. That's when the high traffic is on three A. Mr. Amlang is, is working in the, in trade industry. He's at work before people are getting up. Seven thirty, seven, seven thirty, before people go into school and they're off usually, probably my guess is three thirty, four, four thirty, something like that. So I would urge the parties to just use reasonableness and have a discussion so that when they come back to the planning board, absent any sort of traffic studies or conclusions by traffic consultants, that some sort of, um, you know, real life conclusion has been met as to what works for the, both the, the neighborhood and for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Are there any other people that wish to speak, Lauren?
No, I'm not seeing any.
All right. So can I get a planning board member to make a motion regarding a continuation?
Motion to continue, the November seventeenth at six thirty PM.
Roll call vote, Amy Glassmeyer, I, Clark Brewer.
Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan?
I.
Paul Grady?
I.
Todd Potter?
Todd Potter, I.
Right. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you in about two weeks.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to begin to promote the zoning bylaw working group because this is the next portion of our meeting is a joint meeting with zoning bylaw working group. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chair to continue, but just wanted to let you know that we're going to have some turnover of people joining us as panelists.
All right. Thank you. We are about, um, thirty minutes, twenty-five minutes beyond where we thought we would be at this time. And we're going to continue the public hearing, uh, for, to discuss proposed articles for the Cohasset Special Town Meeting to be held December thirteenth. We will be taking public, um, presentations as well as comments made on the part of individual planning board members. Um, applicants, uh, shall be prepared to share any presentation that our individuals have. If anyone wishes to share information, that needs to be presented. The staff are not responsible for making, um, or, um, setting up the applicant, uh, the presentations. Um, for public comment, please input your full name and address and, um, in the Q and A field, uh, during public comment, questions will be addressed in the order received. Individuals who wish to speak to the board will be prompted from an attendee mode so that they can use the microphone cam and a camera, three minutes or max. Please refrain from repeating items already discussed. That means including items that were discussed last week. Um, statements in the correction should be directed to the chair. I will then direct comments to individuals planning board members or members of the staff. Uh, the discussion of the meeting should be courteous. And, um, we will now, uh, move, turn this meeting. First off, Ms. Katie Dugan will introduce the members of the, um, zoning working bylaw. And then she'll make a presentation, um, to get everybody up to speed and then we'll begin the discussion um, of the individual articles. So go ahead, Ms. Dugan.
Great. Um, I'd like to call to order first the, um, zoning bylaw working group, um, for a meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Take a roll call. Um, President Katie Dugan?
What do you try to guy?
Casma Testa, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Jennifer Oram, I.
Paul Caleri, I.
Right. Peter's muted.
Let me, Peter Pescatori, I. Thank you. So Amy, um, and Lauren, do you need to reopen, um, the public hearings formally? Or can we jump into the discussion? I don't know how that works.
I, I basically can jump in.
Okay. Um, so, um, I'm sorry. I'm going to, um, start with zoning, um, working group one, which is the deletion of eight dot three B and eight dot three C. Um, the working group, um, had met on Monday, um, in a public meeting that was filed under open meeting law, um, to further discuss and reflect on the comments that were made at the public hearing a week ago. Um, and we'd like to start by reading a statement, um, to the public and then, um, opening that up to discussion with the planning board and then subsequent conversation with the community. So to start, um, the zoning bylaw working group is a committee charged by the select board in August twenty twenty to assist the master plan implementation committee and the planning board. The working group is charged with making recommendations regarding updates and revisions to the town of Cohasset's zoning bylaw for adoption at future meeting. Future town meetings. The goal is that these amendments will help advance key zoning recommendations in the two thousand nineteen master plan approved by the planning board. As highlighted at the public hearing last week, our zoning bylaw working group has carefully focused on input from the master plan, which identified as one of the key zoning issues, careful smart growth to preserve Cohasset small town community character. Input from citizens over the past two years and during the master plan process has repeatedly focused on two land use concerns. One, balanced scale of housing, factoring in both neighborhood density and the ratio of construction to lot size. And two, manage overall growth. The comment came up several times during the master planning process that Cohasset feels overcrowded and can't handle any more housing. Well, when looking deeper into these comments, one of the main issues seems to be massing, which can be defined as overly large dwellings on undersized lots, i.e. the ratio of size of dwellings to lot size. The issue of massing is exacerbated by two facts. First, almost two thirds of Cohasset's residential lots are non-conforming in lot size relative to current zoning regulations. And second, there has been a significant increase in the last twenty years of not only development of undeveloped lots scattered around town, but also the raise and rebuild mindset of certain landowners and developers. We began our work a little over a year ago by looking at current bylaws, which might be contributing to the perception of overdevelopment and massing throughout town. In particular, section eight dot three B and eight dot three C conflict with state laws and many of our local zoning bylaws, which are designed to promote safe and thoughtful development. Hence the, hence the proposal you heard last week to censor these unique provisions in eight dot three B and C, which grant waivers to non-conforming lots held in common ownership in perpetuity. However, after listening to public comment and upon further consultation with town council, we have decided to recommend that the planning board refer this article back to the zoning bylaw working group for further study for four reasons. First, given the input from citizens, it's evident that doing away with such lot exemptions would disadvantage some citizens and that further notice is needed to allow for those citizens and the planning board to fully understand this impact. Two, the imper- in perpetuity exemption for underdeveloped, undersized lots cannot be severed in many cases because of the way this bylaw was crafted. And so Cohasset's overly expansive zoning of the past, which predates significantly larger homes of the present, will continue to impact the committee, the community on this critical land use issue. The zoning working group will continue to study case law. The zoning working group will continue to study case law and reflect if there's any way to address this in a different manner. To, and then three, to enact zoning bylaw change, which is meaningful and impacts key land use issues, and in order to be successful in convincing the community of the importance of these zoning changes, the unanimous support of the planning board is needed. The proposed amendment, as drafted last week, does not have the unanimous support of the planning board. And most importantly, limiting 8.3B and C doesn't completely address the issue of massing and neighborhood density. And so perhaps there is a different approach, which will address both of these critical land use issues highlighted above. In conclusion, the working group will continue to address these important land use issues related to massing and overall growth that have been expressed as important points of concern by the community. Our working group has begun to outline a new approach to prevent the perceived overcrowding and scale of homes, which we expect to take to annual town meeting this spring after further discussion with the planning board and public hearings. The working group would now like to have the planning board discuss tonight's recommendation from the zoning bylaw working group, and vote on next steps, as the planning board has statutory power to hold public hearings on zoning-related articles. And with that, I'll pause and let anybody else from the zoning bylaw working group comment, and then I'll ask the planning board to discuss.
Is there any additional members of the zoning board working group that would like to speak? Mr. Chitik?
I'll speak very briefly, it's largely redundant with what Lori, with what Katie has just said. Our intention is to craft a, a tighter, a more bulletproof set of bylaws for the spring that will deal with massing and scale on undersized lots. We're not abandoning the notion of altering 8.3B, B8, yeah, 3B and C, but we do want to sort of add, add to that measure a couple of other devices and mechanical solutions. So basically, we're not abandoning the issue of massing, we're not abandoning the issue of scale, and we are certainly not trying to hurt the small landowner who may have a vacant lot in, in the back of their yard that has some monetary value to them. Our concern is large-scale comprehensive development. And so you'll see a lot more in the spring, but I really don't believe that we're ready now to, at the very last moment, submit an alternative.
Okay, so thank you, and I'm gonna, I have a couple of hands up, but let me say that this is a slight deviation from what we would be doing if we were looking at this for the first time. And I, what we're, what we're doing is, we're saying we wish to continue further work on this prior to having this go before town. As a result, the comments that people need to make are not about the contents of the document as it was last week, but the proposal that's being made by the zoning bylaw working group to withdraw this and work on it and bring it back before the town in the spring. So your comments need to focus on that statement, which was just made, of their interest in withdrawing and moving, and, and continuing to work on this particular article. With that said, Eric Potter.
Can I get Jack first, because he is on the zoning bylaw working group? And then I just want to make sure my members are able to comment.
Okay, Jack Creighton?
Oh, thank you, Eric, I owe you a cup of coffee and probably more, but we'll, we'll pay up on that later. You know, I, I run into this type of thing in, in my professional world, albeit on much larger projects. And a little bit of this has always made me a little bit uneasy. So I think it is very prudent to make sure that we craft this language of what we intend to do, and which we recognize is very important to do, so we get it right. So I think we ought to make it very clear that we're only doing this with a firm understanding. We will craft a little bit tighter legal language, which is in compliance with some very Supreme Court rulings, and that we will move to have this in the spring town meeting, because it is very important, it needs to be addressed, and the importance is so much that it needs to be addressed properly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creighton, Mr. Potter.
At four points, I'll try to make it as quickly as possible. Number one, I, I do believe that notice is important, and I believe that the planning board and, and, and any town board for that matter should immediately change their notice practices and remove itself from publishing in the Patriot Ledger to immediately fo- focus all notices in the Cohasset Mariner, because that is how people get noticed in town. Nobody subscribes to the Patriot Ledger, as far as I'm aware of, and notice should be made in, in the Cohasset Mariner. And my knowledge, it's not been made that way to date, and that would be a reason why people would not be properly noticed, in my opinion. Number two, I firmly support the zoning bylaw committee. I think they did a fantastic job, and I think their intent is, is where the Cohasset citizens and residents intent lies. I think that they're trying to do what we want as a community, what I as a citizen want. And that is not to make this over, too much, not to make too much intensity here, to keep development limited and, and, and to keep it scaled. Number three, I think that with regards to development, I would urge the zoning bylaw committee, before it comes back to us, to, to focus on zoning bylaws restructuring and revisions that, 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 that focus on districts and scaling and, and lot size. I don't want it to be focused on prejudicial, what could be otherwise prejudicial to existing homeowners in town, and that leads to my fourth comment, meaning, which is why I was opposed to this, this, this particular zoning bylaw, and that is for the reason where, where we have to protect our existing residents, and we don't know necessarily, or I don't know necessarily, I won't speak for the rest of you, who's a new resident who's been in town for 10 years, who's been in town for 40 years. So I don't want to be the person that votes on, on a bylaw that's going to change something, that's going to impact someone that's been here generationally. I want to restrict over-density, I want to restrict over-development of the town. I want to keep beautiful, keep Cohasset beautiful, and I want to keep Cohasset the way it is and has been for, for, for many decades. However, I don't want it to be prejudicial to, to people that have been here for decades. I come from a, a tourist town in Newport, Rhode Island, and in my own town where I grew up, there used to be 200 to 300 kids that walked around the neighborhood at Halloween. Now there's 20 to 30, and that's because of the failure of the, the, the town council and the planning by, planning board and zoning board to properly protect existing residents. And the only thing I would say, as a recommendation to the zoning bylaw committee, who I think is doing an honorable job, is to keep that in mind. We want to protect the citizens that live here, and there are other ways to do that moving forward, in, 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 in the ways I believe that there, we can do that is by, maybe not necessarily a single lot exemption right away, although I am not necessarily in favor of it, but in, in, in density and in, you know, lot size and such. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Is there any further comments on this particular point? Where we are is that there's a proposal on the table suggesting the withdrawal and reconsideration of the Article 1 that was drafted by the zoning bylaw working group with the expectation with further evaluation and assessment that we can craft a, a, a bylaw adjustment such that it meets with some of the issues that were raised in last week's discussion, but really more the design of the system being more tightly configured in alignment with law. Katie Dugan?
Hi, Eric, I appreciate your comments, and we'll certainly take those to heart. I do want to just reemphasize one thing with the planning board, and it was, one of the comments we made was the need for unanimous support from the planning board. And to be honest, we are trying to balance two things. We're trying to balance community input, and we, we do have a community that has a diversity of opinion. And I wouldn't want to predict how many are on one side or another, but I do believe that we have those that are in favor of protecting landlord rights over community character. And I have, I believe that there is a portion of the community that would rather protect community character over land ownership rights. And so our job as the working group is to listen to both. But that being said, we need the planning board to come together with us on this and come to a unanimous position and help us craft that middle road, because I personally believe, and this came up in our deliberations on Monday, that without your unanimous support, we are not going to be able to effectuate meaningful change. And so my ask is that when you work with us, you work with us in a spirit of bringing your members together as a planning board to a middle ground. And I'll stop there.
Katie, can I ask a question? When did, when do we get the amendments of the zoning bylaw committee's language? So in order to work, what I'm going with that is, in order to work with you guys, we can't be, we have to work with you, right? We, we have to be put on notice, we have to be given time to review things, we have to be active participants. So that's where I'm, if, even if I'm not, my, my term ends in, in May, and I haven't decided whether I'll run again or not. But if I do, I would ask that, I would task the zoning bylaw committee, whether I look at the email or not, please put us on notice with enough time, and not that you, you may not be the deliverer of the message. So I'm not, I'm not assigning any fault here. I am assigning whoever, we just received changes to the zoning bylaw with two hours ago. So in order to be able to have an intelligent conversation, I need more time than that, because most of us work, and we have to be able to simulate and, 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 and and take, take these things into consideration, and look at things with an intelligent mind, and not just pass things with, because that's the agenda of the town. So I would ask.
All right, I guess what I would say is this, that making space, no, I, I don't disagree with you, Eric, but making space on the planning board calendar for this is an important topic. We've been in view basically every two months. If it needs to be a monthly meeting, then so be it, but making time on the calendar to prioritize these conversations.
All right, so what I heard.
Katie, I would agree, and that's why we have to have the conversations, right? Because I think you guys have wonderful points, and, and we're not far away from making decisions on a lot of these matters. But the fact of the matter is, is we have to be active participants, because our name is going to be associated with this. And I'll be damned if I'm going to walk away from the planning board and be associated with the bylaw that winds blowing up my face, and I have to walk around town with that on my, you know, a, a, a stamp on my back. I want to be able to be informed and have an act, be an active participant. Otherwise, I would just hand it over to the zoning bylaw committee and have them be the person that stamps it, right? So that's all I want to hear.
All right, so, so I think, I think that this point is well made, and I think we've found an accommodation, which is going forward, we will have a monthly slot by which we are working together and, and, and conversing and evaluating in tandem with the zoning board working group. And, and we will do the best we can to get information to the members of the planning board with sufficient time to do review. Okay, thank you, Clark Brewer?
Yep, thank you. So to understand what's being proposed here, we, we have several proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws, and we're just discussing the working group, number one, about deletion of 8.3B and 8.3C. That's all we're talking about. We haven't talked about the other two categories of, of changes. And my, my feeling about tabling this for fall town meeting is that I think it's a reasonable thing to do. What, what everybody has said is finding a way to, to balance individual versus collective rights, and I guess I'd say responsibilities regarding the future of Cohasset. So I, I, I would say your approach to getting an idea of what the unintended consequences might be for these changes, and what would, what might be a reasonable substitute to allow more, nobody on the master plan committee liked this word, more controlled growth into the, in the future. But, you know, whatever's done in the future, you want it to have a sense of fit with its neighbors, its neighborhood in general context, and if there are mechanisms that can be put in place.
Thank you, Mr.
To help ensure that.
You're basically repeating things which Mr. Potter is suggesting.
It's more than that, though, Amy, it's more than that, though, Amy. And the point is this, is, is that if we're not able to foster, when I have a discussion, which Zoom does not always allow, then the zoning bylaw committee is almost destined for failure, because they're going to be working in a, in a bubble. They're not going to be able to get the feedback from us until it's on the table, and then they're going to be in a position where they're going to get shot down on some issues, and it's going to be like, what the hell did I waste?
Exactly, but Eric, you.
My life for, so we have to have some sort of discussion of what works and what doesn't work, so that they can go back and figure out something.
But Eric, right now, we're not going to fix this particular one.
No, but we have to have a discussion, we have to have a discussion.
But, but we have two other articles to go through, and there's been.
Which I think is a lot clearer than this, this is the one that creates a problem.
Well, it's too.
It doesn't create a problem if we're taking it off.
We're going to take it off, we're not going to actually address it. So as a result, what we're going to do is increase the interactions between the zoning bylaw working group and the planning board, and we're going to set something up that's very clear as to when documentations will be distributed, and then when discussions will take place.
That's fair.
I have Tom Callahan, and then Peter Pescatori.
I'll, my, mine is, my comment was going to be about the process, but we'll, we'll fix that. I have nothing to say right now.
Okay, Mr. Pescatori?
Yeah, I just wanted to iterate that, you know, the, the town, the community has voiced its disapproval with massing on undersized lots. So that has to be fixed, one way or another. And it's the, the in-perpetuity part of that is also a problem. And the, the rights of the owners is also a problem that we have to deal with. So we're going to try to put this back together, respecting the, the, the property rights of, of the owners to give them, you know, what we talked about is to figure out how we give them a means to be successful, but fix the two underlying problems of massing and perpetuity, and that's what we're aiming for.
All right, thank you. So I guess Jack Creighton, and then Mr. Caleri.
Yeah, I think briefly, Eric had an excellent point, and I think, you know, we, and our point, and Katie, I'm sure, will, will agree. We'll just make sure that some of the, some of the working documents that we have, we'll just, we can clearly send them to the planning board, and you can open them at your leisure. The other thing I want to say very briefly is that what I have seen is that we all kind of in Cohasset do agree on the, the issues, and that we do have a common way to solve them. So I'm very, very optimistic, I'm not hearing absent people who are professional developers, and we, we know what they're going to do, that's fine. But for the community, I think we all agree, and I'm, I'm very hopeful we're just going to get it done right. And planning, I'm sure that we will make sure we keep you posted on all the things that come before us, so you can, can read them, probably you get tired of it pretty quickly, but we'll get them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creighton, Mr. Caleri?
Would you tell Paul he's muted?
Paul, you're, he's not trying to talk yet, Mr. Caleri? Oh, okay, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry, my headset died, and I couldn't hear anybody. Thank you, Madam Chair, my, my question is probably for the public. But Attorney Murray, if you could let the public know, because I know that there was some discussion last week about once something has been put on public notice for a change, that nothing would be able to be filed before the town was to vote. Now that this is taken off, could you just let the public know if that still is because it was given public notice? Do you know what I'm saying, like?
I, I do.
Yeah.
I, I do, I'll try, I'll try.
I, I do. I'll try, I'll try to address both. So we've got two things sort of going on here. One is the fact that as soon as a, the first notice of a planning board hearing appears in the newspaper, that any applications that were to come in afterwards for building permit or special permit afterwards would be subject to that zoning change, even though it hasn't been adopted yet. We would have to act as though it was going to be approved, which is kind of a crazy limbo period that we get put into. But the other thing that's at.
You're, you're cutting out. You're cutting out.
We have a negative vote of town meeting on this article. It can't be brought back up in the spring.
Ms. Murray, you cut out just when you started to present.
I'm sorry, this is, it's been a terrible connection tonight. I should, maybe I should try to log back out and get back in. Can you hear me now?
Can.
Okay. So I'm not sure where I cut out, but, but two, two different things that Mr. Cleary was referring to. One is that as soon as any sort of zoning amendment, notice of a proposed zoning amendment is advertised in the, in the newspaper, then any applications for a building permit or special permit that follow after that first advertisement are treated as though this zoning amendment is in effect. Even though, even though we, we, we don't necessarily plan on going forward with it. The other thing is that once a, a planning board or zoning change appears in the warrant, if there was a negative vote of town meeting on that particular article, so let's suppose the, the amendment to repeal section eight point three B and C was actually presented to town meeting for a vote. If town meeting voted that down, then we couldn't bring this back again for at least two years unless we get a favorable recommendation from the planning board. And I think the feeling was after last week's meeting that perhaps we would not get, that article might not get a favorable recommendation from the planning board. So rather, rather than have two years where we can't do anything with respect to section eight point three, the zoning bylaw working group is asking, let's just pass over that article and definitely postpone that article. Sorry, I apologize. We're asking for the article to be referred back to the planning board and the zoning bylaw working group for further study so that we can keep this article alive for a future town meeting for discussion. I think in light of that, if that is what the planning board is ultimately going to vote to support tonight, then I, I think we are safe with respect to any applications that may come in between now and town meeting for a building permit. Because I think the, number one, I think one of the things that we've discovered after looking at section eight point three is that a number of these lots that are grandfathered in perpetuity are just that, grandfathered in perpetuity. So they weren't necessarily going to be affected by the zoning change anyway. But also if the recommendation of the planning board is going to be that we refer this article for further study, I think we are safe with respect to any type of building permit or special permit that should come in that this is not going to be in effect and therefore not going to have to apply to any lots.
Alright, thank you. So, so what you're saying in essence is, is that there will be no penalty on anyone between now and town meeting that would affect someone's use of their land based on the fact that we are going to be referring this back to the, to the zoning board working group. Alright, thank you. Paul Grady, did you have a comment?
I think you finished. So in other words, the genie's out of the bottle and I can imagine where you can anticipate a pretty busy planning board this coming year. As we'll have a lot of people putting in for changes, new buildings and things like that. So. Good. Thank you.
Alright.
But to that point, there would be, there would be any way, even if we repeal this. Because, because the.
I'm, I'm sorry if I'm confused. So are we conceding grandfather laws?
Are we what? Eric, say that again.
Are we conceding grandfather?
We, we're not conceding anything. All we're doing is removing this back to the zoning board working group for further consideration. We're making no comments about how or what we're going to do with it.
And I agree. So, so like as Paul said, that the genie is out of the bottle, but maybe that's the notice that was, you know, wasn't provided. So, but anyways. Yeah, Attorney Murray, what, what you're saying is that when this, if this goes back to the ZBC, that people will have the right to do as they please. Is that what you're saying in layman's terms?
If it goes back to the zoning bylaw working group that people can do as they please, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I think a better way to maybe put it is, nothing is going to change for right now.
So yes.
I'm actually a much lighthearted person. Much more, much more later.
The problem is the choice of words that anybody can do what they please. They can't now because we have zoning bylaws and we have state statutes. It's just that the current status quo will not change based on this withdrawal. So whatever was in place yesterday is in place today and will be in place tomorrow.
And that's from the notice that we received at three thirty, Eric.
That is correct.
Yeah, but. I'm not going to get into the legal stuff about this.
I mean, if I could just say one quick thing, I, I think the next and last step is for the planning board to actually take a vote. It's not enough for the bylaw working group to recommend.
I make a motion that we refer ZWG, Article ZWG one back to the zoning working group for further study.
Wait a minute, I want to ask Ms. Murray, if given what we are proposing to do, are we still required to entertain public comment on this at this time? Or is this actually moving it out of the line of work and we are postponing further discussions?
Well, I, I, you're still required to take any public comment on it. But I do think that given the posture that has changed here tonight, where what the zoning bylaw working group is asking you to do and what I expect the planning board is ultimately going to vote to do, the folks that were joining last week who were asking questions, well, what about my lot, the lot I own next to me? I really think we should just not encourage those kinds of conversations tonight because save that for another time when, when the zoning bylaw working group comes back with whatever the next iteration would be with respect to section eight point three.
We went from forty participants to two, so I think we're, we're looking good right now.
Well, alright, so then we do have one person in the chat. And I'm going to ask a direct question to that person. Is your comment related to us returning the proposed article to the zoning board working group for further evaluation and assessment? And if so, then there really isn't anything more we can say because that's actually what we're going to do. Do you have something else that you feel is pressing that needs to be said?
Madam Chair, there's a couple of comments in, in the chats. I'm, I'm not certain who you're directing that to. So I'm not sure if you wanted me to go down the list.
Well, it looks like we may be planning to do that. I will say one thing, which is if someone wishes to speak about their own individual property, we cannot do anything about that in a meeting like this. You can only get that resolved by going to the town hall and speaking with the building inspector. So we will not have conversations about specific properties because we cannot do anything about those. We can't do anything about them anyway. It's where, to get any sort of affirmation of the use of your property must actually go to the building inspector. So if that's what you want to talk about, that we can't do anything about it, so we wouldn't entertain it. Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, so the, just the mechanics of this, if we're having a public hearing about something and we, we're recommending to, to pull it from the, from the warrant to not recommend it. There's a difference between not recommending it and pulling it from the warrant. Now, in terms of the timing of the publishing of the, of the warrant, Lauren, just pulling it out is, is going to be acceptable to the selectmen. I mean, the selectmen just referred this to us for a public, public hearing. At this point, all we have to do is, is vote to say it's going to be, it's, it's going to be referred back and it's not going to be in the warrant. Isn't that right? Yeah. So.
Okay, so what is the.
Did someone make a motion then?
I did make a motion.
Can I get a second? Lauren?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We just, there is a couple of public comment items and as council director that we should still take public comments. So do we want to take public comment before you vote?
Well, let me ask you, do we need to take public comments before we vote or maintain public comments afterward?
Take the comments.
Yes.
I have one from Mrs. Ms. George and then it looks like there's.
She was, Ms. George was for the last one.
I'm sorry, that's also in the chat. I actually turned the chat off, so we're only using Q and I. I apologize for the confusion.
Alright, so with regard.
So first, Madam Chair, do you want me to take over this?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So we have Virginia from Jerusalem Road. I'm going to promote her so she can speak to you. And then in the meantime, also, we have Marty Corey of Beechwood Street would like to be recognized to thank the zoning bylaw committee and planning board for withdrawing the article. The notice requirement going forward is critical to future success and he doesn't have questions regarding his lots. So before we go any further, Virginia, if you could state your, your full name and address for the record, please, before you address the board.
Virginia Jensen, five forty-two Jerusalem Road, Cohasset.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to just express that, that I support Katie and the working group and the people who care about the future of Cohasset. Our laws are not in compliance with Massachusetts state laws and this is long overdue and necessary. I wonder how long we have to wait. She's, this group has been working. They've expressed the wishes of the town. I know that there are wishes of others, subgroups of the town. But she has surveyed groups of people, been working on this with the groups of people. And a few small self-interested groups seem to be having a lot of influence in the town. Whereas the people in town who are speaking up, meeting, coordinating about what the future of this town will look like are, are not being heard. I, I, I can understand the position you're in and how you want supportive people before you go forward. So I, I support whatever you decide to do on the committee. However, that's just my personal perspective that we're, we're not being heard as much as we need to be heard, the people in town. Notice was properly given, legally properly given. I'm concerned about the scale of housing. We have a house in, you know, eighty percent of a lot in our neighborhood, but I don't want to speak to my particular situation. I just, I'm very concerned about the town, in the future of the town. Of course, if you live in the center of town down on Main Street there, you probably aren't affected by this. However, Straits Pond is affected and the environment of Straits Pond is affected and I appreciate that some of the people on this committee and, and some of the people on the zoning or some of the, the selectmen have supported Straits Pond and blocking or maybe, what can I say? Carefully looking at development on Straits Pond because we, we have a very fragile environment. And we are currently, it's just, I don't think we're considering the environmental concerns. And the we're also not, we're just not considering what our town will be like in the future unless of course we live in Main Street and then nothing's going to be affected.
Thank you very much.
That's my comment. Thank you for listening.
Very much for commenting.
Thank you, Virginia. And now we have Marty Corey and I want to apologize for the record. I misspoke when I said Marty Corey's address. I, I. Yes, I apologize for that.
No worries. I'm sorry?
We can't hear you.
He said he would welcome you in Beechwood.
I, I just wanted to, first of all, thank Jennifer, Lauren Lind and the new building inspector, John Halen. They've all been very responsive to my requests with regards to the PowerPoint presentation that the working group did, as well as thanking the working group for the hard work that they did on this process. And being cautiously optimistic that you will vote to withdraw the article. The thoughtfulness that you have all shown, given the, the spade work that has been done. I, I love Cohasset and I love the thought that citizen participation can be included in the conversation. And lastly, the only suggestion that I would make, since a home is the largest purchase investment that anyone will ever make during their lifetime, the, the notice requirement is really critical. Eric made the suggestion of the Mariner. I think that's a wonderful thought, number one. Number two, we get a phone call from the water department when they're going to flush the pipes. Zoning is so critically important to the homeowners in town. If they did that reverse nine one one, saying that there's going to be a suggested change and, and the notice will be on, you know, January first. Because counsel's right, Carolyn Murray, once the notice goes out, it freezes the conversation and any ability to make any further change. So, you know, I just, I think the Mariner, it is a, a good way to publish it. But I think, you know, that you really need to make absolutely certain that everyone in town on any proposed zoning changes is, is made well aware in advance of any proposal because you can't, you can't make a suggested change with the, 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 the hearing, proposed hearing date, stopping the clock on anyone's ability to make a change. And, and I, I think that's critically important going forward. And I, I'm so happy to hear that this decision is being made. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. And next we have Elle Feldman. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Elle Feldman, three DAB. I'm going to share Marty's sentiment. Thank you so much for considering the other side of it. Again, new homeowners, this is our life savings. This would severely impact us, ruin us financially. So thank you so much for thinking of us. We just are so excited to join this community. We've got a small home being built. Thanks to Clark, Eric, Woody and John Hallen. I cannot from bottom of my heart, thank you enough for really hearing this. I want to ask again, I know that Clark hinted at it, Eric had asked it and I'm still a little confused. Would, are you revoking the notice and the publishing the warrant would be revoked? That's what I'm very unclear of and that's a pretty big sticking point right now. We're a few weeks away from permit, so I just would like to understand that.
I think Carolyn should answer that.
Yeah, it's, it's directed to Carolyn, I, I believe.
We, we're not revoking the notice because obviously the notice has already been out there. But if the planning board tonight, if, if the motion tonight is ultimately to refer this article for further study, so it's not going to go to town meeting for a vote, then I think it is safe for anyone who needs to apply for a building permit in the interim. I think it's safe that they can rely on status quo as far as section eight point three is concerned.
Okay. And then, once we get that building permit, that notice would not hinder six months down the road. You couldn't just halt building.
No.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to make sure of. It was very simple and I just needed to hear it very simply. So. Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to make sure of. It was very simple and I just needed to hear it very simply. So thank you so much. Again, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman.
Thank you. And then next we have Sean Richard of four forty-one King Street. He inserted a question, would the working group consider working with a local developer or a group of local developers to help with coming up with a plan to move forward? We could be an asset and get on the same page rather than working against each other. I don't know if Mr. Richard would like to address the board directly or not.
So can I, can I take a crack at answering that? So the zoning bylaw working group is a, a public, um, town committee. We meet based on posted meetings. Um, they're open to the public. The agendas are posted, um, at least forty-eight hours, but in many cases a week in advance. And so if there's a topic that is interesting to the public or interesting to a third party, they're certainly welcome to attend and listen. Um, and so that's my response for now. And I guess I would say in general, um, you know, the planning board knows this, um, but the public should know that all of our meeting minutes are available on the town website. We've been meeting for close to fifteen months. They're published, um, as soon as they're approved. And so if there's any questions about what we've been discussing or what we have set as, as quote of goal areas or work product, um, that's all publicly available. And so as, as, um, some of the expressed concern, you know, the, the quote unquote, the cat is out of the bag on, on how the zoning bylaw working group is approaching or thinking about some of the goal areas. The point is for all of this to be a public discussion and yes, um, part of our plans are to, um, once we can hire a consultant, which we're going to special town meeting, um, to request funding for, is to begin a process around public forums to further generate conversation. So I guess my point is participate, pay attention to our agendas. I'm not sure nine-one-one calls on zoning issues are, are practical, although I appreciate the spirit of that. Given that I do get quite a few calls from, um, my water company also. But that being said, all our work is public and we do have, um, a request at special town meeting, which I would love the support of everyone. To hire a consultant to help us with a more comprehensive zoning overhaul. And part of that, and the big piece of that is getting support for our working groups so we can do public forums. We're all volunteers. And so our ability to be able to do that work in terms of communicating more broadly with the community is dependent on our ability to hire consultants. So I'll, I'll stop my pitch there for another warrant article, but I do think that, um, people need to understand that this is public, um, and we, we meet every two weeks. And we're happy to entertain conversations. Um, and I'll be, I'll stop it there.
A very, just, just to piggyback on that, this is very easily fixable. This is the easiest thing in the world to fix. Just publish it in the class of Mariner. And this is not in, it, anything that say that we're doing anything wrong. It just, sometimes people follow status quo and that's the way it is. And I, believe me, I, I've dealt with state agencies for years and, and I have, I'm not placing any blame on anybody. This is, it's very simple. You just move the patriot, from the patriot lever to the class of Mariner. Very, very simple fix. And, and, and then I would have no sympathy for anybody that did not have noticed after that. It's, it's very, very simple.
All right. Thank you for that. I know.
By the way, Eric, I've unsubscribed from the Cohasset Mariner, so.
Happy to hear you do this advertising.
Christmas is coming, Katie, but Lauren has her, has her hand up.
Lauren Lind and then Tom Callahan.
Sorry, Lauren. I'm sorry, Lauren.
That's okay. I just wanted to add, uh, well, first I'll just say, state that, um, Jen Orm and I are going to look into the switching over planning board to the Mariner. Um, so we'll, we will look to address that request. And then I also just wanted to make everyone in the public aware that you can sign up for through the Crossit, Town Crossit website. You can sign up for notifications for agenda postings and it doesn't have to be every single agenda that comes through town. You can select which committees and boards you're interested in. You can get text and email notification. And the way that you do that is you just go to the Town of Crossit, uh, crossitma.org, you hover over how do I on the, the homepage? And then if you go under apply for notifications, you can sign up that way. So if people are interested in being notified every time planning board or zoning bylaw working group meets, you can do that through the website. So I just wanted to announce that as we're talking about notification and things that that's available to you.
All right. So I think where we are right now is, uh, Clark, did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Tom Callahan. And Tom made a motion. And do I have a second? We did have a second. Clark, did you make the second?
Could I hear what the motion is again, please?
The motion was to refer Article ZWG one back to the zoning working group for further study.
Can I get a second?
Second?
Roll call, Amy Glassmar. I.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Kelly and I.
Paul Brady abstain.
Eric Quater, I.
Uh, thank you. Let's move on now to the next article. Thank you for the discussion, everyone.
Um, all right. Thank you. Um, so Lauren, I'm going to ask, um, for this one that, um, we actually project, uh, the, the text of the article. Um, we don't have any presentation materials that we're going to go through on this. We covered the presentation materials last time. There is one slide that if we need it, I can show an example of what, um, the impact of qualified way and adequate access is meant from a land use example, but I'm going to leave that if we need that. So, um, if you don't mind projecting that, um, just to kind of recap for the community, zoning working group two, um, has been retitled, um, at the request of planning board member, changes to zoning definitions instead of changes to residential zoning definitions. Um, in addition, um, in the bylaw language itself, um, for the four definitions that are existing in our bylaws today, um, we did go through and do a, a, a black line, um, since the warrant will not be printed in color. Um, we made, um, notations using text strike through, uh, feature to delete language in the current bylaws and, um, text with underline to denote where, um, language is being added in the bylaws as it relates to the, um, three definitions, or excuse me, the four definitions, lot, frontage, street, um, way and common driveway. To kind of recap, um, why we are bringing forward, um, this particular zoning, um, amendments at special town meeting. Um, the first intent, um, is to ensure that um, future development complies with state law and that our bylaw definitions, um, where appropriate align with statutory law, but also case law to ensure that, that we are um, able to draw a, um, better connection between those two things as we talk about buildable lots in town. Um, second, and very importantly, the zoning enforcement officer, who is also our building inspector for Cohasset has asked for and endorsed these definitional changes. Um, third, the intent behind, um, the addition of additional definitions, um, such as qualified way, buildable lot, legal frontage and adequate access is based on the need, um, based on land use currently to make sure that we have clear standards in terms of what is considered a buildable lot. And then fourth, um, we really truly are trying to address, um, as we did, as we do in all of the articles we bring forth and underlying land use issue. And in this case, um, there are sort of two pressing ones that the planning board itself has witnessed as it's gone through ANRs and other, um, large home reviews, which is related to, um, adequate access, but also this concept of what is a qualified way and that qualified way, at least for those ways that are predating subdivision control bylaw, that those old ways are constructed, um, in a way that relates to the present and proposed use of the abutting lots. And there is change along these older private ways as new lots are being developed in terms of the relative use of a small private way versus what might have been contemplated when it was originally built in the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties. Um, so those are kind of the overview. Um, so just to kind of hop back to the language itself, um, Clark, I believe you had recommended the change the title. You would also recommend that we do a black line, which we've, um, presented here in the revisions today. In addition, as a compromise position, um, under common driveway, uh, we have struck the reference that was in the version that you saw last week, um, to limiting common driveways to three lots being served, um, in a residential district from a common driveway. We'll leave that discussion on the number of lots, um, to the regulation discussion, which is, um, I think being currently, um, discussed for, um, mid-November. Um, but we do believe, and we presented the case last week, that there is a strong case for reducing the current number in regulations from eight to three. But as it relates to the article in front of you today, we've struck that and left it to a regulation conversation. Um, so I'm going to pause there, um, it, and sort of split this conversation into two pieces. The first being the existing definitions, and then we can move on to the six new definitions that we're recommending being added. So I guess I would open it to, to come, uh, questions from the planning board or comments.
Um, let me just make a quick comment. Um, all of the changes that you've outlined for um, the format, um, the title, uh, and these changes to existing, uh, definitions, uh, uh, I think are, are, uh, are, are fine. Um, but, but to break up a discussion, each i- i- the new definitions, I, I still have some, um, questions and I think deserve some discussion, but, but, but frankly, in terms of the, the, the changed definitions, um, I agree with all of, all of them. I don't see any of them per se as problematic, even though, you know, Jeff Delisi said this, like, this, uh, a hundred and fifty locations in the bylaw that says lot. I don't know if anybody's ever ha- has followed up and checked each of those to see if the definition changes would make a difference or not, but, um, uh, barring, uh, some kind of a test like that, I, I, I think of the, the, these first, um, four change definitions are, are, are fine, the, the way they've been modified. Thank you for your efforts.
Um, so Clark, I, I thought a little bit about Mr. Delisi's comment from last week.
Yeah.
Be, because number one, um, ironically, um, as we know, lot is used, um, prolifically in the zoning bylaws, but the, the, the change that we're making to the definition of lot is basically, um, taking the first sentence and, which is really the definition of parcel now and leaving the second sentence. So for all intensive purposes, we've just split the, the previous definition combined lot and parcel into one uh, uh, agglomerated definition. We've now split it into two. I don't think we're at any risk by, by, um, clarifying what is a lot and creating inconsistencies. And the reality is that, um, that check, um, has happened many, many times before us in terms of the three hundred and ninety or whatever reference is he has referred to. So I, I agree that we should be comfortable that we're not endangering ourselves. I think that comment, to be frank, was, was meant to, uh, meant to be just what it was, um, intimidating and not necessarily, um.
Well, maybe. I mean, it, it, it never hurts for a member of the public to say, well, did you think about, you know, and, 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 uh, and try and spur us on to, to, to drill down and be more aggressive in, in double, triple, quadruple checking on, on, on all of those locations. But, but I, I, I just think, um, uh, the, that notwithstanding, all, all four of these changed, um, definitions, I think they're all, they're all, uh, they're all good.
You know, Clark, this is Woody. It, it might be helpful if, if, uh, Jeff, uh, has done this count of lot. Um, he should submit each and every one of them to us. I know, I'm serious because.
I, I, I may not have drilled down on it to that extent, but.
Well, then he should probably not be making.
No, I, I think it's okay to make.
Substantiated comments, but I'm just saying these definitions comply exactly word for word with state law. And if there's anything to be changed, it's the, that references to lot buried somewhere in our bylaws. But these, these I, I truly believe have to be, uh, clarified, uh, right up front and then everything else flows from these.
Um, and you know, and, and in all fairness, I mean, and, and Tom will probably state this, um, as part of the more comprehensive zoning redraft, there is the opportunity to have that fun task of going all through three hundred and ninety references.
And, and, and let me say that having started that, I've done that, at least to, I've seen every place that the word lot exists because it changed it from a small L to a capital L to be consistent with the format of the new regulations. I'm fairly comfortable without having done a deep dive of every use of the word that these, these definitions are not going to impact the current draft of the bylaw. But that kind of review where these terms are going to be used is going to be thoroughly vetted during the rewrite.
That sounds great.
And, and Clark, we're volunteering for that.
Yeah, Clark, you're going to, you're going to work with me on the re- I, I need somebody to help me with the rewrite, Clark. So you, you just volunteer.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the, the first four? Otherwise I'll move on to the six new, but.
Oh, I, can I, oh, can I just bring up what Mr. Bjorklund brought up? Um, and this was in the definition of lot, the reference to three hundred five point three. Although it, it exists, that same reference is made in our current definition of lot. It's, and it's never been interpreted that Article eight about non-conforming lots doesn't apply. Perhaps just a clarification that a lot could be, a parcel and a lot could be buildable, not only if it complies with three hundred five point three, but it also might be buildable if it, if it receives relief under Article eight. So it's a, it's a, it's a big technicality because we've never, ever interpreted the zoning bylaw in the way he's suggesting, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
So the, the language, all relevant regulations, which includes Article eight dot three?
Yes, it's a, it's all of Article eight, not just eight point three.
But yeah, no, I'm sorry. So, but all of Article eight, I guess in my mind, it fully complies with all relevant regulations. And in that case, it's Article eight, but if, if you.
I agree. I just, I, I told him I'd bring it up.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I don't see any comments.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm going to move on to, uh, the next six, which are, um, the new definitions that are being added, um, at the bottom of page one and on page two. Um, parcel, um, I think we covered last time is really just for, is just the first sentence from the existing lot definition being called out, um, separately as the definition of parcel. Under qualified way, um, the working were, wanted to reemphasize that the language, um, that begins the definition of qualified way is an exact replication of mass general law as it relates to, um, the definition of a qualified way under subdivision control bylaw. And for the purposes of the land use issue in town, it is really number four, a way in existence before subdivision control law that, which for Cohasset was February of nineteen fifty-four, certified by the planning board as having sufficient width, suitable grades and construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the present and proposed use of abutting lots. What, in reference to your concerns, Clark, around what is the trigger? There are two. There is the A and R process and subdivision control bylaws that trigger this conversation about qualified ways. But in addition, what is being suggested in this, um, new definition is that there is a second trigger related to um, the issuance of a building permit related to that way in existence prior to subdivision control bylaw, so that the planning board, um, can have a discussion about whether, when new homes are being added on a way, whether that way meets the needs of the future proposed use of abutting lots. And I think we mentioned when we presented this last time that this idea of residential access regulations is not a foreign concept to planning boards, um, in that, um, we cited Plymouth taking a, a version of this and putting in their bylaws under, um, residential access. And Wellesley on the other side. And Wellesley on the other side, taking a different approach and incorporating that discussion about. What is a qualified way as part of a rules and regulations and what we're suggesting here is that in further rules and regulations. The planning board would adopt. Rules related to the adequacy of those pre-subdivision control bylaw ways. So I'm going to pause there and and ask. My zoning bylaw working group, if there's any points that I missed as to how we've recharacterized this. No, no. So I'm going to pause there because I know this is probably the most substantive. Change that we've made and and ask if there are questions or concerns from the planning board.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm, I I will say, I I did ask what the trigger was and it seems like you've you've put the trigger in. That a certification, if someone applies for a building permit it by the planning board. Whether there's an A and R that's requested or not. The planning board would have would have weighed in on the A and R. As required by Mass General Laws, but you're adding something. That in an additional certification wants a building permit is pulled. And I but I wondered. And I had a question for counsel, whether this conflicts with the Mass General Law. Or. Is having something in addition to the Mass General Laws acceptable?
Um, I I don't think it conflicts with Mass General Laws and as as Katie was also saying. This was based in part on Wellesley and Katie was good enough to share with me all of her. Research from Wellesley and this is not word for word what Wellesley has done. But this idea that there is a certification that must be issued. By the planning board before a building permit gets issued, that is built into the Wellesley zoning bylaw. And then they do have regulations as to what they consider to be. An adequate pre-subdivision way or ways that it should be upgraded. So I think that this is. This is, this is fine, and I I think based on the Wellesley example. It has passed muster with the Attorney General's Office previously.
And just to be clear, it's not all building permits, it's only building permits for new dwelling, so it's when there is incremental new traffic. Associated with a new dwelling. Not raise and rebuild, not, you know, that's not the issue. You know, if you if if you'd like to see, I can show the example of Ocean Ledge in terms of how this has impacted one road that. You know, up until nineteen ninety-nine had four dwellings on it and in the period of seventeen years went from four to ten. And currently has another two undeveloped lots, so in the span of, you know. Under a decade, eighty years, it will have tripled in terms of the the number of homes attached to a single non-subdivision control. Private way. And there has been limited review during that period where it's tripled in terms of whether the adequacy. Relative to safety and other considerations. Has been undertaken.
I'm sure, could could I just ask one question on this point? Thank you. I I know Katie, I had originally just said prior to the issuance of of, you know, a building permit, I think for a structure. And then the zoning bylaw working group changed that to a new dwelling. Are we certain that there are no pre-subdivision control law ways? Where other uses besides residential dwellings? Might be made of of lots of budding those ways, you know, are there any commercial? Uses off of pre-subdivision control law ways?
Don't know, but the examples from a land use perspective that I can think of that the planning board is. Wrestled with are all residential in nature and are clearly in residential zones. And again, we're not, we're recommending this from the perspective of. What we've seen and heard from the planning board in terms of. How you have struggled and I'll let Tom and others speak to this, but struggle to define. In some cases, what are these? Pre-subdivision control law private ways? And are they adequate? I mean, relative to the 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 new dwellings that are being proposed?
For the public that might not understand what the consequences are of this situation that. Katie described and she used Austin Ledge as the example. Is that the actual dimensions of the road are insufficient for the volume of the residential usage? And it it is the case that there's been several accidents that have occurred because of the steepness of the slope. And the curve that is at on the road to the point where one of the residences actually crashed into. A granite pillar because she could not. Slow down enough because the road was very narrow and it was iced over. So it is, it it's a question also of safety if people aren't, if they're trying to figure out why we're concerned, we're concerned about. Use as it relates to such things as safety. So how do we move this forward?
So so I guess my my our recommendation is is the is the revised language in front of you, it adds. The clarification that Clark was requesting in terms of what is the trigger above and beyond the A and R process. We've had council review that and review some of the precedent that we were basing this recommendation on. We cited the land use examples in the previous conversation as. Diab Lane as Ocean Ledge as Black Horse. As, excuse me, Black Horse. Being three just recent examples where this issue has come up, there are more that I'm sure the planning board can reference in their minds. And so with that, I mean, this is our recommendation. It's obviously subject to further comment from the planning board. We are also, you know, we had referenced when we were talking about common driveways, there is a plan in place. To have a discussion about those rules and regulations, whether it's two sets, one for common driveways and another for. Non-subdivision control private ways. Or a combined set of regulations that and that was previewed with the planning board in August. And I believe it's scheduled to come before you again in the middle of November, so there will be a discussion about these regulations. That are being discussed in the definition, so the two will be moving forward in tandem.
And can I just address that for a minute?
Sure.
To Eric's comments about getting a heads up about all of this. You'll recall that. Amendment to the common driveway regulations and then implementing the Plymouth regulations about non-subdivision roads as a regulation. Was brought before you in August as two separate regulations. Since that time. We had, we. I considered consolidating him into one for simplicity's sake. And since that time. These added definitions in. CWG two have been included, so. Right now, there is a working combined regulation. Based on one thing I'm catching here tonight, I'm going to have to amend it one more time, but the zoning working group. As a group hasn't considered this combined regulation, but it's my intent, my hope that that's the one that you will see. The but you at least have seen an earlier variation of it. Where we're going to spell out specifically. With some clarity as to what are the types of access that are recognized to for residential properties? What are the construction and dimensional requirements of each? And then the the biggest change since the changes to these definitions is to set out the trigger processes. And what review, what will be the review process of the planning board? So, you know, I will try to get that to you. I I want to have the zoning working group take a look at it before we send it to the rest of you, but. You can have my pledge, I'll get it to you as soon as possible. If you want to see a draft, ask me, send me an email.
And the intent again is not to is is not the denial of the building permit, it it is is addressing the. The qualified way and the appropriate construction and suitable width and grade issue. That other communities have considered that we that we also frankly consider in our subdivision control ways. It's funny, we have regulations about common driveways, we have regulations about subdivision control ways, but. What is in between, which is the vast majority and where the majority of the development is happening in town. Has not been addressed in terms of of that particular issue in terms of safety with. And construction and as Amy has cited, you know, it does land out unfortunately being a safety issue as you are. In the case of Ocean Ledge over, you know, a period from nineteen ninety-nine to present. And almost tripling the number of lots that are on a a way that hasn't been particularly upgraded.
You know, I'm just wondering, is there opposition to this? I mean, we all of us are. Are doing our fair share of talking, but I'm not sure that. To what purpose? Is it? Is it unclear to some people? Is it problematic to others? Or could we move on through and 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 get to the third?
Great idea.
Acceptable.
Great idea, great idea. Well, it definitely makes sense to run through the rest of the definitions that are new and then get everybody's input on on the on the new definitions. Because I do have some comments that I'd like to make.
Okay, well, I I'm way comma qualified, this is the same language as you saw last week. That I don't believe there were any comments on, along with buildable lot. Legal frontage and adequate access, the none of these definitions have changed some from what you saw a week ago and we didn't receive any specific comments on those. The only thing I will say about adequate access is again, this is an issue that. Community members and in some cases, the planning board has struggled with. But since we don't have any definitions that tie to. A litany of case law that supports these concept around principal access, illusory access and and. Access via paperways, when it comes to the issuance of the building permit. Our zoning enforcement officer has nothing to point to in our bylaws to say this is an issue and so. As I alluded to at the start of this conversation, part of what we're looking to do is ensure that we have definitional support. For both statutory protections that are out there or stat or aspects of the statutes. That relate to buildable lots, but also case law and and this is, you know, the adequate access definition. Again, doesn't have precedent in in state statutes, but has lots and lots of precedent. As it relates to case law, in fact, there's this lovely gentleman Smithers who has written a. A hundred hundred plus page treatise on all of the case law associated with this, so. The principles are there, but we just don't have the definitional support and again, things like illusory access. Given our topographical environment are issues that need to be considered. In fact, the Ocean Ledge example. There were two lots that were developed that had frontage on Jerusalem that when you look at them from a practical perspective, they landed out using. A a common driveway off of Ocean Ledge instead of using their their frontage, which was directly a budding to Jerusalem, so it becomes a question. Of are we going to give support to our building enforcement officer when it comes to having these conversations? Before issuing building permits. So I'm going to pause there and and open it up again to questions from or comments from the the planning board.
Clark Brewer.
So, um, you know, again. My concern about the new definitions is that with twenty percent of private ways, and I don't know what the percentage or. Percentage of residents impact is on. Ways that were in existence prior to zoning or any of the, I don't know, in terms of the four buckets under qualified way. I I'm not sure how how that breaks down. My concern is that with twenty percent of ways being private ways. And all different rights that I think this is a a broad and and sweeping. Change to the bylaw. That I'm concerned about unintended consequences and and I will say that I I don't understand why we haven't adopted. Subdivision roadways to be public ways as soon as they're completed. Even if the town has an agreement from town meeting in the fifties to plow private. Ways with three or more houses and there's also an agreement to do some maintenance. That was approved at town meeting for house for ways that have over three houses. I just. My concern is is that 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 the changes affect many. Many residents and I I think it's going to be important moving ahead to. To convert private ways to public ways.
That's not really before us, but why are you concerned, Clark, about that?
Well. Because over over decades of of neglect for doing this, we have. Probably one of the largest percentage of private ways in in the region, maybe the largest. And that's why I think it's a problem. I mean, this new subdivision is coming on. I I we talked about Situate Hill earlier, that's a fifteen year old subdivision that. Could have been accepted as a public way as soon as the last coating of of asphalt goes on.
Which has to be done at town meeting and the reason most towns haven't done this is is the financial burden. If a developer wants to do a subdivision way or develop a subdivision, they. By definition, really are accepting the financial burden of of maintenance.
But that's why we, that's why subdivisions have built the subdivision control laws. That they're built well and the engineers double check and triple check and so that they can be accepted. I mean, other towns. As soon as.
Let's we but one person speaking, please. Thank you.
All right, let me just finish. I don't think this is at all germane.
Yeah, I don't either.
Definitions.
Right. Okay, that's fine. I made my point that it's overwhelmingly far reaching at twenty percent of the of the of the total of ways. And that's why I think that there may be unintended consequences of what's proposed for these new definitions, so I don't support them.
All right, thank you for that.
My next up alphabetically?
Well, you're the. Next ten, I was, I was, I would like to, I I think I had my hand up first. Clark, I'm not clear exactly what you're saying when you're. Referencing the fact that this is affecting twenty percent of the ways. What is the problem? What are you worried about? I don't understand what you're worried about.
I think that this is a regulation has a has a broad. Application, you know, it twenty percent of the ways. Are private ways in Cohasset that fall into these four buckets that are outlined under. The definition of way qualified. So that twenty percent of our homes could be as many as six hundred, although it's not likely to be a a one to one percentage, but. There's hundreds of residences that. That are affected by the nature of their way, private or or otherwise. And my concern is for unintended consequences.
But what what are those consequences? That's the problem is you're not being specific.
I don't need to be specific and think it through completely. This revised language was brought to me. By email several hours ago, so I think in in terms of bringing it to the floor of town meeting. And having it be thoroughly vetted and understood and recommended to the floor of town meeting. Particularly for for Fall Town Meeting, which is supposed to be for Bill. Particularly for, for fall town meeting, which is supposed to be for Bill.
Oh, stop it, please.
No, no, I'm not. You understand my point.
So, I just, I, I want to just clarify one thing in terms of. Your comment, Clark, about the, the public ways or subdivision control ways being accepted by. The town. I mean, that certainly is a valid policy question. And I guess, you know, there are two. There are two groups that have jurisdictional control of that. One is your board, the planning board, which makes those recommendations. And second, the select board, which would. Further endorse it for recommendation to town meeting. So I, I'm not. I'm, I'm not discarding what you're saying, but it, that is a. Policy question that's completely in the control of the planning board and frankly, the select board to address. As it relates to the. Non subdivision control private ways that were in existence before February of nineteen fifty-four. The issue is that residents with new dwellings being added to those are being impacted. And so. You, you're talking about the unintended consequences. The unintended consequence is the protection for residents, existing residents. Residents on those ways from incremental traffic not being certified and discussed by the planning board. I mean, Eric. Was speaking earlier to the fact that we need to protect our existing residents. And this is a way of protecting our existing residents. From the unintended consequences of. New building permit for new dwellings being added without the consideration for safety purposes and other. About the incremental traffic and it's, and it's a conversation that. The planning board can control through regulations, which is what we're suggesting. So. I understand unintended consequences, but the unintended consequences. Are for the protection of those residents that preexist. On the qualified ways before six homes are added to Ocean Ledge that are impacting them and they have no control over how that's impacting the traffic on their way. You spent. Thirty minutes or more talking about a traffic analysis for our commercial. Development on CJC. The analogy is, is kind of directly related is that nobody is talking about the protections for. The residents on these qualified ways when it comes to the addition of new dwellings. And so that's what we're suggesting. And I think the unintended consequence actually. Is a positive one to the residents. And I guess that's the way I would respond. Thank you.
Let me, let me let Jack speak and then I'd like to say something else.
Yeah, I think we, we need to look at the plain language. Certificacy of the adequacy of the way. Planning board shall be required. Planning board may adopt rules and regulations. This puts the power to handle something that needs to be handled where it belongs clearly in the hands of the planning board. And I think this is kind of very simple. No brainer where we take the planning board, allow the planning board to do its job to protect the citizens through reasonable regulations. I think it's well written and then we should, we should be moving on.
Here, here, let's move to a vote.
So I would just like to say one last thing, which is that Clark, are you worried that this is going to restrict something from happening? Or are you worried this is going to cost somebody who wants to put in a new house on an existing way? It's going to cost them something because it's costing citizens now as houses are being put on ways. Where the roadbed is not sufficient and it is being tore up, torn up. And the only way it's going to get fixed. Is if all of the people who were previously on a road that actually had integrity now have the burden of having to pay for that. So I guess I, I'm having, I, I just want to leave that and say, it's not clear to me what the, what the concern is ultimately. Is it? Somebody's going to pay something or somebody's not going to be able to do something?
Well, I mean, I haven't thought through the issue one hundred percent completely, but, but I will say it, what it appears to me that. I, I, and I'm sympathetic to Katie Dugan's comment about unintended consequences. I think that it can happen on both sides, but. What seems to be going on here to me is. The. That a problem has existed with private ways that, that's multifaceted and. And, and basically that. That, that the problems aren't being addressed directly. Like, for example, if, if you wanted to make. Let's, let's say the, the, the common driveway off Atlantic Avenue, you know, the one that has like twenty houses off, off of it. If you wanted to improve it. There's no mechanism to improve it because everybody owns a part of that common driveway. As a way that's been in existence since prior to zoning, it's, it's, it's in itself problematic. And it seems like, okay, somebody, we, we, we saw an A and R a, a week or two ago. For a property there that was getting changed around and. I, I just. Don't see there being a mechanism for improving ways that are problematic. It, with this bylaw.
It's not intended. It's not intended.
One person at a time. Okay, so.
There's a method for, for not having any additional impact to that way that may be inadequate. But here, there's not a methodology for improving that I think is effective for improving ways that are, that are not functioning properly.
Okay, so I want, I've, I've got a number of people that I want to respond to and I want to do it in the order of people's hands. So please, Paul Grady, Tom Callahan, I. Think Peter Pescator raised his hand if not. And then Jack, if you want to put your hand down.
Oh, sure. Glad to.
So Paul Grady, and then Eric Potter at the end. And then I want to see us unwrap this one up.
Yeah, that's what I'm heading towards. It's putting it in the hands of the planning board. So it gives the planning board the authority to fix any problems. There's not really a gray area. Regardless of the street you're talking about. But anything that comes forward will be in our hands. Kind of a no brainer. I think it should just go to a vote. It's gone on for an hour and a half.
All right. Thank you. Tom Callahan.
Yeah, I have to echo. This is a no brainer. These are definitions. Definitions that are adopting state law, nothing radical, nothing different. They're not going to adversely affect anybody if we bring clarity. Clark, you sat there two weeks ago and you were ready to turn down an A and R because we didn't know what the thing, the thing, the roadway, the piece of pavement actually was. We don't know what the twenty house thing on Atlantic is. These are definitions so we can define them. Understand what they are. Bring clarity to that issue. And then we follow it up with a regulation, which I can assure you will set forth a process of standards of how they should be built. When an upgrade might be required and, and a determination process by the planning board. As to adequacy of a road, but these are simply definitions. I, I will say this to Mr. Richard with his comments in the Q and A. Th- these are not going to adversely affect anybody when you bring clarity to what now is. Is a mess, is chaos. We can't even identify what the hell that thing is on Black Horse Lane because we have no definition for it. So I'd like to bring it to a vote as well.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Potter, this is the last comment I'm going to entertain.
So all I would say is this is, is I, is I do, I think I might have jumped in front of Jack.
No, I'm done. I'm done.
The only thing I would say is, is, is first of all, this is one of those bylaws where I would defer to the zoning work by law committee. I have no idea. Whether this is appropriate language or not, but after hearing Clark, I would say this. My concern is, is that. On the last paragraph, the planning board may adopt rules and regulations pertaining to the adequacy of pre subdivision control law. Ways. We are, I'm not in favor of. Leaving it up to a, a board with no criteria. By which to make a decision. I'm not saying I'm going to vote against this, by the way. I'm just saying I can see where Clark is coming from in the sense that. We are kind of giving this with the language as it now reads, you are leaving it up to. The board and the board could be. Liberal, could be conservative. Can be centrist. I don't know what the board's going to be. Neither do the citizens of the town. So. The, the board of today can be much different than the board of five years from now. So if I were a citizen of the town, the concern would be. That there are no criterion by which. The board is going to make a decision with this current language.
Okay. No, 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 wait, wait, Tom. Tom, out of order, out of order. Eric, we cannot.
No, I mean, I'd like to hear a topic because that, that's my.
No, I want to, I want to move this forward. We cannot specify what you just asked in this. Article. We can do that in rules and regulations, but we have to have the definitions first before we can utilize the rules and regulations.
But I agree with that, Amy, because in that large home review, we do set forth criteria by which we review large home review applications. So, and, and maybe I'm wrong and I, I'm open to that discussion, but that is the concern. I think Clark is our, maybe our, maybe I'm. Summarizing what Clark's concerns are more than I should, but I, I'm open to, I, I'm not saying either way whether I'm for or against it.
I'm going to recognize Katie Dugan and I want to see us bring this to an end. We still have one more to get through.
So one of the overall concepts that the zoning bylaw working group has been talking about is that our current zoning bylaws. Overstate rules and regulations throughout. And so one of the thought processes is to. Have a definition or have a. An area bylaw and then have it refer externally to rules and regulations. And so. Unlike large home review where we kind of co-mingled both. We're trying to approach this from a slightly different but equal. Way, which is to have a definition, which then refers to. The rules and regulations which specify exactly what you're concerned about, Eric, which are all the dimensional, all the specific things that. Any future planning board, independent of whether they're left, middle or center, is going to be held to. And so. I understand that you've seen it both ways in the bylaws. Our personal opinion is that having more in the bylaws actually creates problems for you as a planning board. Because in the long run, to the extent that you want to slightly change something. You have to go through a, a more onerous process versus having it in rules and regulations where you can call a public hearing. Throughout the year to address it versus being held to twice a year, special town meeting. So that's just the thought process behind it.
Just very quickly, so just if you could, just clarify what rules and regulations means.
So rules and regulations means that it is a description of. The, in, at least in this case, the dimensional quality and the construction quality. Along with the, the process by which the planning board would. Address the certification. In fact, I sent your board and my board. The Wellesley example last Thursday morning in order to give people a sense of what this could look like. If brought to its full fruition, which is. The kind of core piece of it being in definitions and then the reference to the rules and regulations. So. There is a sample out there, but I guess, you know, to, to directly answer your questions. What you were expressing as concern of not having clarity over, that's what's in the rules and regulations.
All right, let's.
Eric, Eric, an example is the mass general laws for many agencies set out. A law, Department of Public Health, Department of Environmental Protection, then the CMR, the regulations. Provides all kinds of meat to the bone. And that's what.
This is important. This is exactly what I'm asking. Yes.
That's exactly what the analogy is being done on a municipal level. And, and we are. In the rewrite, getting all that administrative things that need to change over, more quickly over time. Out of it. So that it can be changed easily and we can adapt to changes in technology and the way applications is submitted, blah, 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 blah. And, and it'll be, it's, it's, it's there. I mean, I. I will tell you that I'm seeing some things I have to tweak with it from our discussion tonight. It'll be tweaked, but all the meat that's on these, this bone of these definitions will be in a regulation. And you'll see that.
So you are saying that the planning board, this planning board and future planning boards will have a reference for rules and regulations?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that we create.
That we create and that you will have, you will have the opportunity to create the regulations that'll go with these definitions in three weeks' time.
All right. So let's please, can I get a motion? To.
Actually, do we need to take public comment? Amy, I'm sorry to delay it, but I want to make sure that we're following process. I'm sorry, but like I, I would hate to have us taken down because we don't take public comment. I know it's late.
Lauren, do you see public comment? Yes, we have comment in the chat. They're all from Sean Richard at four forty-one King. I'm just going to read these quickly. Could we be provided with an explanation of the results of these definition changes? There are a lot of changes that will alter a large amount of properties. In my opinion, this should be tabled until we get a more clear understanding about who. Specifically is affected by these changes. Notice landowners regarding these changes would also be a top priority. These are not simple definition changes. They also alter bylaws and could be considered by law changes in nature, therefore needing more attention and research. Trying to pass on a simple definition change is not accurate or true in nature. More research and explanations are needed.
I make a motion?
Second.
Can I make a motion, please?
You may.
Make a motion that the planning board issue a positive recommendation on zoning working group article two.
Second.
Roll call vote, Amy Glassmore, aye.
Clark Brewer, nay.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter, aye, and also move that Tom Callahan remove his hooded sweatshirt and, and be a normal attorney tire.
I don't, I don't have my heat on and it's freezing. I hold out until November first.
I put a jacket on too.
Okay, so let's see, let's see if we can fly this one, land it quickly and refill it and take it off, okay? Ms. Dugan, please.
All right, guys. Last.
Motion to approve.
Thank you for your support. Zoning Working Group Three, ledge protection. Lauren, if you can. Bring up the, the text of the bylaw. This is one that again, that maybe perhaps short shrift or maybe we did a really excellent job discussion at our last meeting. There was one comment regarding whether in the special permit process, there could be setback relief in exchange for. Ledge protection. As part of the process. I think the conversation that was had by the planning board last time was a good one in terms of reflecting the pros and cons. Of that concept of a setback. The, the working group did meet and what we have before you tonight is the same language as you saw last week. We felt that in the end. The, the simplicity of what we're recommending here, plus the fact that any discussion of setback relief not only. Stepped into the jurisdiction of the ZBA, but also potentially had the impact to. Impact neighbors whereby, which is really part of the reason for the setback to begin with. On a sensitive topic like ledge protection sort of outweighed unfortunately, the. The merit of the idea. So as a result, we have, we're bringing back the same language for your consideration. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. I guess the only other thing I would say is that, you know, this is, this is our. Working group making good on a promise to readdress a subject after further study. So I guess I would note to the planning board, which they already know, but also to the broader community, we do try and. When we take things under further consideration, like we were asked to at annual town meeting, come back with additional thought and response. And so. Our hope tonight is that by the further research and discussion that we've been able to create a more balanced way to address ledge protection.
Mr. Potter.
Oh, after taking, I, I'm in favor of this bylaw. I would just make a recommendation for discussion only that. If, if the ledge is, let's say, three inches above ground and someone wants to put in a pool. There could be. An argument to be made that that's a little bit prejudicial to the homeowner. So I would make a recommendation that would be any ledge that is above twenty-four inches or. Something that. Is some, someone more qualified can make an argument about that's, that's, that, that is a, a realistic here. That, that's all I'm saying. Other than that, I, I, I'm not. Other than that, I, I, I'm not opposed to this bylaw. I do think that if, if the ledge is above ground by let's say it's or, or level with the ground, I don't know that that's something that I want to see in front of my, in front of me for a special permit, but other than that, I like the way it's written.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, I, I had two comments and I would say just as a follow-up on what Eric said, the exposed ledge face is, is defined here in the middle. And it, and it says any portion of rock formation lying above pre-construction grade at any given point. And, and it seems like if, if there's exposed ledge that is nominal or less than twenty-four inches, that that's not the type of ledge that we're trying to protect or that we would want to bring in for a special permit to to talk to, see what options might be available to proposed project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
And then the other comment, the other, other point was I think there's a conflict in, in some of the trigger definition. And, and before I, before I say that, I want to say I really like, I really appreciate and want to find a useful way to protect especially significant ledge in Cohasset. So under A, section three, it says the exempt, the following activities are exempt where earth removal is necessarily excavated in connection with the lawful construction of a building, quote unquote, building. But our bylaw defines a building under the definitions, also an accessory, a building accessory, which basically this is anything with a roof. And it seems like we would, we would want to include, so if you go under B, it, it, it talks about the, the structure and examples of being a shed, a barn. And it seems, it seems to me that, that perhaps a building or garage might want to be, would be an accessory building as well as a shed in a barn. And I'm wondering if, do we want to exclude sheds and barns from this definition as accessory buildings?
No.
I can't, I can't see this.
I mean, there are structures. A structure is almost anything. It's a flagpole. It's a, it's a retaining wall, but.
Structure doesn't have a roof.
It's a swimming pool, but, but a, but a building, an accessory building and a building both have roofs. And that's, that's where sheds and barns sort of jumped out at me on requiring this, this trigger. I mean, if you're, if you're basically saying a building or a house or, you know, commercial building, do you want to group roof structures or building accessory, accessory buildings in the exempt category?
Okay, is this a question, this is a question to the group. So let's keep that one. Discuss it. Tom Callahan?
All right. To that point, this is, this is intended to adopt the current earth removal bylaw exemption of this construction of the principal dwelling and the utilities associated with it. We also included, what do we include sewer system, utility or driveway? The other accessory dwell, and I believe it also was garage, but the other accessory dwellings that one might come up with, structures, structures, and that word is used purposely will require the special permit. And as far as the numerical, you know, two feet or above, that was tried, you know, I go back on the history of this to two thousand and five. That was tried in the two thousand and five version. It was tried in the two thousand and seventeen version. It was roundly criticized, including by people sitting here tonight because it was unenforceable, impossible to measure. And then in the discussions we've had as a board since I've been on it, talking about this article, we came to the point of agreeing, all of us, all five of us, that we would be protecting all ledge and not making these splitting hair subjective of what's significant and what's not. That was the, that was one of the failings that some people here cited in the two thousand and seventeen version. So we've abandoned that, that concept. And I, as the author of that version, I fully agree with the banning. So, you know, we have the power of a special permit process, no more detrimental to the neighborhood to approve something that might have a de minimis removal of ledge. We have that power, but we are here to protect something that is unique to Cohasset, that the community wants us to protect.
Well, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying.
But you're sniping at it.
No, I'm just trying to help perfect it. I mean, you could take it personally, but you know, the definition of building or building accessory, maybe that means the same thing. I'd like to remove the ambiguity. I mean, the way it's worded right now, if it's an attached garage, then it's an exemption. If it's a detached garage, then it's then it would be jurisdictional.
So there are three, so if we can just table for a minute, the, the definition of exposed ledge, whether it should include this concept of de minimis or otherwise amount, amounts of exposed ledge. Clark, if I'm hearing you correctly, I mean, there's three definitions that I think come into play. Structure, which is the one that our working group spent the most on and building, which is the second one that we spent the most on. You're, you're referencing a third definition, which is building comma accessory. And, and if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking whether building comma accessory is included in the exempt as attached to quote unquote, building or whether it's attached to our comment in B, saying that it's structures accessory to the principal use of the lot. And I think it's that, that word accessory that you're struggling with.
Yes. So if it's accessory structure or accessory building, do you want to either add accessory building to the after structure or take out sheds or barns?
I'd rather, I'd write, the intent of this was that all the accessory structures would have to go through the special permit process and only the primary building and its necessary utilities and driveway would be exempt.
Right, but the principal, principal dwelling isn't, isn't defined here. It's, it's, it's building.
We've already agreed on this.
But we don't have a definition.
Prior to. So I don't know why we're going back and forth, back and forth at ten o'clock at night. We've already agreed to.
Is it referenced in the bylaw?
I don't believe principal, hold on.
No, it isn't.
It isn't. So there is no concept. There's, in terms of dwelling, there's dwelling comma multifamily and there's dwelling unit. But really your choice of wording, Clark, is building as it relates to that principal use of the lot. My suggestion is that in terms of the land alteration activities, since we did include in our illustrative sheds, barns and patios, that it'd be structure and accessory building that's included in the special permit process.
Okay. So we would add accessory?
So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest in the first sentence that it says as it pertains to structure and accessory buildings.
Where does it say that?
So. Is there's two references to accessory in the, the paragraph B. The first is, so in the, let's start just for a second with this. The second sentence, which is the illustrative purposes, it says structure accessory. What I'm suggesting here is that in the construction, we would change the language to say this includes the excavation and construction of a structure or a accessory building.
Well, why don't you read the definition of an accessory building that's in the bylaw?
An accessory building. A detached subordinate building, the use of which is customary incidental and subordinate to that of the principal building, which is located on the same lot as the occupied by the common principal building. By the way, I didn't mean to wag my finger, finger. And, and that to me describes what Clark was concerned about in our illustration, which is sheds and barns.
Yeah, and I'd be concerned about the absence of a garage under A three. Garages are, are pretty typical.
But if it's attached, I'm sorry, if it's.
No, there's, there's no distinction. There's no distinction between detached or, or, or attached.
No, no, but I know, but it would be a part of the structure if it's, if it's a.
Well, if it's attached, it will be a part of the structure. It's that.
I'm sorry.
I thought in the zoning working group, we did agree that garages would be exempt. Going back to some paragraph three, that little subsection three, put the word, put the word principal in front of building and then after building comma garage comma. Principal, principal is.
I, I, I'm a little concerned about the word principal in front of building just because that doesn't exist in our definitions and building does.
It, it does, it does in the definition of building accessory because it, that definition said.
Yeah, it's in the second line. Thomas is right. It refers to principal building.
Okay, that's fair.
Principal, it's principal AL, not LA.
But the operative word is detached. So a, an attached, it would have to be an attached garage.
We're, we're not making that distinction, Clark. So it's any garage and that was our intent when we met and it's just a typo that we missed. So thank you for catching it, but that's, that was always our intent. So it's the principal, it's the house and the necessary, the necessary things for that house to exist, which garage, driveway, utilities, sewer system. Everything else is a special permit.
Okay. I'm sorry. We don't have a definition for garage, but everybody knows what it is, right?
Perfect. There's, there's, there's a principle of the law that you adopt the plain and ordinary meaning of things when it's not specifically.
Okay, so now, okay, so now that this is clarified, it seems pretty easy for us to move.
No, I, we really need to just like bang out the language so I don't have Clark concerned. So.
So I would propose some language, maybe that would make Clark more, feel more comfortable. And paragraph B, after the first sentence, where it ends with planning board, it would mirror the large home review language where it says after planning board unless what, a special purpose of the planning, planning board, which shall not be unreasonably withheld
No, no, it's unreasonably withheld is illegal. So I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
You can never, you can never put that in the statute.
What's in and what's out, I think is, is what's critical here.
So can I, can I make two more suggestions along the lines of just nailing down what's in or without? So Lauren, we're in B where you've inserted accessory building. Can you please capitalize accessory and capitalize building? Right there, we've got your clicker, exactly. And then second, in the first sentence, second line, after structure, as it pertains to a structure and or accessory building.
It's a meat, Katie, that this allows for fences, sheds, barns, patios, courts and pools.
Why are you talking about accessory buildings? A building has to have a roof. A fence is not a roof. I mean, a fence is not a building. Before, we should leave it.
You're muddying up the waters.
Can I make a motion?
We have, we have public comment, Madam Chia, just for the record.
And can we hear from Paul if he has any comment?
May I just ask you, is this helpful to have the text still up or do you want me to take the text down?
It's helpful. Thank you.
All right. So are we at the point of having public comment? If so, let's move to that.
Wait a second. You didn't listen to what Woody said. You're adding too much language.
So we're trying to resolve the conflict that Clark pointed out that in our.
It's in conflict, Katie, but I mean, you're going to build it four paragraphs out of one.
Wait, let's not have multiple sleep. It's too hard to edit and have so many people speaking.
It's fine. It's, it's fine. Leave it. The way Katie has just done it is fine.
Well, all right. Doesn't comply with the, with the zoning definitions, but that's all right.
And again, they need the one outweigh the needs of the many, so.
I'll tell you, a pool, an athletic court and a fence is not necessarily an accessory building. In ninety-nine percent of the cases, it's not.
It's a structure.
Or an accessory building such as fences, patios, athletic courts and pools. Those are not buildings.
That's right.
Is this, is this piece necessary? Because it's already saying in the next sentence for illustrative purposes and covers all those items.
I would agree with you, Lauren.
Okay, then we can delete that reference there and, and keep it in the illustrative if people think that that is more clean.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Are, are we ready to vote?
No, we gotta get public.
We have to hear our comments. Community.
So Lauren, do we have public comment?
We do. I'm going to save this first before we get rid of this one. Hold on, give me a moment.
The other thing I would say very, very quickly is I think, I think the major issue here is, is criteria for the planning board, this planning board and future planning boards, right? That's where people have problems. And that's where on, at, at, at a meeting, that's where people are more liable to vote against something is when there's not criteria that they will be able to understand and know that people on the board or future boards will, will make determinations on. We already have a planning board, a, a, a bylaw that's been passed with the large home review in three hundred dash five four that sets up that, that we can mirror the language on that would kind of give vague criteria. It, it, it's in paragraph B that would, but I just, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, but.
Large home review is a poor example because it, when it passed in two thousand and five, I said to the planning board at the time, you need regulations to back this up. Fifteen, for twelve years, there were no regulations until the amendment was done in two thousand and eighteen. But again, we can, if, if the, the special permit standard is a known standard, so not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. If you want to pass regulations to further deal with this, we have that power to do that and I would recommend it.
We want to put that into this bylaw then.
We don't object to you guys. I think the, the only issue, and this is what council advised us on Monday, is that as long as you take steps and fall through on that promise to put in place rules and regulations, it's not a problem. But if you were to enact a bylaw change and then not take that action, you create a conflict and a loophole by which applicants or developers can fight you. So I completely support what Erica's saying about having specifics and rules and regulations. Thank the Lord are in your jurisdiction and you can pass them with a simple fourteen day notice of public hearing and you can revise them again six months later. So rules and regulations are a fantastic tool for you. Except if you have a reference in a bylaw and then you don't follow through. So I'm happy if you want to add that reference to the rules and regulations, but then the onus is on the board to follow through and make sure that the rules and regulations get written. Silent, you have the option to, you'll put them in place, but not follow through if, if work gets busy or life or whatever. So that's my only cautionary tale.
Look, I, I think that's a reasonable concern and I, I, I really think since our land alteration bylaw is new and the planning board hasn't seen any for review yet, adopting this and kind of seeing how's it goes, seeing what might need to be changed next year for the bylaw and see how it works, it may work fine the way it is. Um, I, I'm okay with that.
All right, so Lauren, do we have public comment?
We do, thank you. First, we have Kathy Barrigan of 646 Jerusalem Road under 11.3A1. Could you please give me an example of what you're referring to in that statement? And the section she is referring to is the following activities are exempt and that be number one, the transfer of material from one part of the lot to another part of the same lot. So I don't know who, who should, if anybody would like to speak to that.
I believe.
I mean, that's a common thing for somebody to do, is to leave the fill on site and deploy it there rather than carting it off.
Yeah, re- remember that the bylaw deals with more than just ledge, because it's replacing our earth removal bylaws. So it's also dealing with all earth and material. And, and I'm trying to look that up quickly, but I think our current earth removal bylaw has the same exemption.
It does, A1, A1 is an existing, in our existing bylaw, and it has been for a, a, a long period of time. It's actually it's in our benchmarking comment in most of the bylaws that we looked at. So the transfer from one area to another, as Tom said.
And just Kathy had raised her hand afterwards, so Kathy, if you could state your name and address and just clarify if you're speaking as a member of the public or as a member of the conservation commission.
Yes, Kathy Barrigan, 646 Jerusalem, and I'm speaking as a member of the public. And I, I was just wondering in particular about that statement, if they're talking about when it says transfer of material from one part of the lot to the other, there is it material that's on the top of the surface of the ground? Or are they also referring to something that could be under the ground, such as ledge? And then move to another part, which would make any sense to me, but I just want to understand that statement.
So I think the, the intent is, is referring to two paragraphs above the extraction of materials, so soil, loam, sand, gravel or stone. In terms of transferring ledge from underground to another part of the lot, you see that happening in town when people are building stone walls. They, they land out excavating and then deciding, oh gosh, I have this nice field stone. Now I'm going to build a, you know, a stone wall. So that's, that's an example of the transfer of, of ledge, but it also could be so, soil, loam, sand, gravel or stone.
And that would be an example where it would be exempt, right? The, the ledge could be used for the stone wall. To the other part, okay, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Chris Cadori?
Yeah, wouldn't the modify be as long as it's a permitted use, you know, as long as it's a permitted excavation?
Again, I, I, I think that the, the language as written is, is what's been our bylaws for a long period of time.
But it implies that, that you have to have permission to dig to begin with.
All right, do we have other comments, Lauren?
Yes, one more comment, Sean Richard, 441 King, scenic ledge should be a priority to protect along scenic roads. Trying to preserve ledge in someone's backyard seems like a potential waste and effort. I do appreciate all the work that the zoning bylaw working group is doing, and we'll look into taking part of it and, and looking to taking a part of, but this needs to be more in tune with logic in a sense, not to waste efforts on things that ultimately don't impact the town or anyone in general. And with that, we have no further comments.
Can I, can I personally ask that Mr. Richards, just answer one question about whether he is speaking just as a resident or he's also speaking as a developer in town who owns lots that this could potentially impact?
Mr. Richards?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the, the last half of that question.
So my question is just, could you just further describe for the board and for the community exactly what your relation? I know you are a resident of Cohasset, but my understanding is you are also a developer and own lots in town, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
All right, so I think unless there's an additional set of pressing comments that we have not touched on, can I get a motion from a planning board member to direct our actions?
I make a motion that the planning board issue a positive recommendation for the passage of the zoning working group, Article Three.
I second it.
All right.
Can I just, Madam Chair, can I just ask, just, just to have the motion, I'll say as amended in this discussion this evening?
Yes, as amended for tonight's discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Mr. Potter?
Sorry, Paul Eric Potter, nay, no, just kidding, aye, I would aye.
Eric, I'll drive over to your house personally if you.
You're taking your life in your own hands.
I don't want to do that, Tom, I don't want to do that.
All right, now, let's see, I with all of this done as it is, the last bit of information, last bit of activities, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lauren Lind. Unless Tom is gonna come out.
I know, I just want to quickly say, because I've been searching for it for the last 10, 15 minutes. Under chapter 41, section 81Q, the planning board has the power to pass rules and regulations, so we don't need to necessarily state it in every bylaw that we.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lynn, please continue.
Thank you, everyone. So I have all of your votes and the actions that you took on these three separate articles, but I do think you also need to vote to close the public hearing, so if I could just have you entertain that.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. So with that, I'm, I'm just going to quickly let you know, our next planning board meeting is November 3rd, followed by November 17th. That's in our regular schedule, and then in terms of upcoming meeting, this process for the special town meeting, advisory committee will hear these two articles on October 27th, and then this will go to the select board on November 2nd. So that's the process that lies ahead for us. I won't take any more of your time, because I know it's late in the evening. If anyone has any specific questions, feel free to reach out to me, and otherwise, thank you all so much for your time.
Do we need to, do we need to close the?
Boards to adjourn.
I've got, I've got a couple of things going on here first, Paul Caleri.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, we need to close the zoning bylaw working.
I'm, I'm making a motion for.
Any board to adjourn, I'll second that.
No, 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 ho- ho- hold on, I, I would like to address the, the, the notice provision very quickly. Is there a way in which we can address this in the coming weeks so that it goes in the Mariner?
Um, yeah, well, I'm just confused, we has no more further notice to be run for the.
No, but not, not, not with regards to this, but while we have it on the, just, it's already late, I understand all that. I, and I hate late meetings more than anybody else, but trust me, more than anybody else.
Have an answer for you.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yeah, we're gonna look into it, but you have to realize that the Mariner has a ridiculous deadline, which is why we use the ledger and why. So, so we use it for the zoning board because we meet once a month. They require a notice, you have to place the ad on Monday to be heard on Friday, and we run two weeks, just like the zoning boards, it's a very difficult. But we're gonna look at it, I'm sure we can accommodate it, but that's the reasoning behind that, and that's why for the last 15 years, the Patriot Ledger's been used, because you meet on Wednesday.
And you all understand my reasoning for, for bringing it up as an issue, because.
You're absolutely right, Eric. Notifying the town or informing the town, we're, we're asking for big trouble and are really being delinquent. So I think we need, I don't, it could be Cohasset 143, it could be Facebook, I don't care what it is.
By statute, I mean, we, we're held to statute.
Right, and it, when there's, there's public hearings, we have to notify, we have to publicize the notice in a certain way, in a certain form. And maybe the state legislature needs to catch up with modern technology and forget the printed newspaper. But until that happens, we have to use the printed newspaper.
That being said, that being said, nothing precludes us from doing additional notification. I think we should use a lot of additional notifications, and I think Eric makes it a good point. But more notifications, because the intent is clear, we want our citizens to know.
I can assure you, on the scale of the rewrite, we are going to do public forums and multiple public forums on each segment we address, because it will be impossible to deal with the entire rewrite in one section, section five session. But for the section five process that we just did tonight, we are limited to the statutory requirements of using either the Patriot Ledger or the Cohasset Mariner.
Well, I'm just saying we would add it. In favor of more 11, 11. 12 o'clock meetings.
It is 10:08. Could I get a motion to adjourn, Eric, can the, can the Z, the zoning?
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.